All right, it is 4:30. We'll call the meeting to order. For public information, a copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of the meeting room on the east wall. Feel free to read that if you need to. We'll have roll call.
Harris?
Yes.
Knapper?
Here.
Meyer?
Yes.
Raisig?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
All right. We'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I'd ask for approval of the agenda, or are there any changes?
I don't have any changes.
Okay. Motion for approval of the agenda?
I move that we approve the agenda.
There's a second?
I'll second.
So we have a motion and a second. We'll go ahead and vote.
You have five yeses.
All right. Motion's carried. I wanted to welcome everyone this evening to the meeting. We do have, of course, a fairly important public hearing that we'll be having shortly, but I want to remind all that this meeting is being recorded. And because of that, it's recorded and it'll be broadcast at a later date. We want to remind anyone who wants to speak to be sure and come forward to the microphone. And when you're recognized, state your name for the record and spell it for the clerk, if you would, which assists the county clerk in the minutes. Also, we expect for everyone to use appropriate language. Also, we need to all check our cell phones and try and be sure that they're off or on silent. I'm the worst offender, I'm sorry, but I think I have mine off.
Even when it's off, it rings.
Even when it's off, mine rings, or when I think it's off. Want to remind commissioners as well to speak directly into the microphones clearly, loudly, so that when the recording's played back, that we can hear. Somewhere along the agenda, I will plan to take about a six to eight-minute break some way mid-through the meeting. I don't know exactly where it'll be yet, but we'll decide that when the time comes. Also remind people, just because we've been doing it the last few meetings, that we do have Mr. Phil Kelly, who is an attorney that's representing the county on civil affairs. We'll talk about him a little further down the agenda, but I'd like people to know that he's sitting here and that this is somewhat new and he's representing the county on civil matters. And so if there's something that he has any concern about, he may be interrupting and telling us about that while we go. So, just want you to be aware of that. As we go on down the written agenda, the board reserves the right to enter into a closed session if deemed necessary. This evening, we do not have any scheduled executive sessions, so we don't particularly plan to do that, but we reserve the right to do that. All right. So we'll go on to the next item, which is the consent agenda. These are several items that are dealt with under one motion unless someone from the board wants to deal with one of them separately. Is there any thoughts on the consent agenda tonight? Certainly entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
There's a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. We can go ahead and vote.
You have five yeses.
Motion's carried. We'll go on then to the next item, which is the Board of Equalization. We need a motion to go into the Board of Equalization.
I move that we go into the Board of Equalization.
I'll second.
So we have a motion and a second. Let's go ahead and vote.
You have five yeses.
Motion's carried, so we're in Board of Equalization. Ms. Heather, you're here to...
Yeah, I have one vehicle exemption this evening for Community Action Partnership of Western Nebraska. This is a new vehicle for them. It is a 2022 Ford Explorer that is used to transport youth dwelling in their runaway homeless youth shelter. It is a tax loss of $496. And I would recommend approval.
Meets all your requirements for that?
Yeah.
Okay. Any thoughts or discussion?
That isn't just the tax or anything, that's just the licensing fee, basically.
That's the motor vehicle tax. That's the only thing that you exempt, is the motor vehicle tax. So they still have to pay a small registration fee?
I guess what I was asking, it's not the sales tax on a new vehicle?
No, that's different.
Okay, good.
This is just motor vehicle. So it's like the tax that you pay when you renew your cars.
I move that we approve the vehicle exemption for Community Action Partnership.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, we'll go ahead and vote.
You have five yeses.
Motion's carried. We'll move on to receive the tax list corrections. We do have a copy of that in our packets. Is there any questions, or Heather, you don't have any comments on those at this point?
She doesn't do these.
All right. Any comments from the commissioners? All right, so do we have a motion?
Make a motion to accept tax corrections as presented.
Okay.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Let's go ahead and vote. All right, motion's carried. The next item is discuss and consider resolution for certification of fiscal year '24-'25 tax levies. Kelly?
I have those in your packets. Does anybody have requests of them?
So this is a requirement that you have, Kelly, to...well, let's let you explain.
It's a requirement that the board has to do that I do for you. So what we get is values from the assessor. They're just copies of the certifications of value that they give to all of our political subdivisions. From there, you recognize some of these. They come before us in a preliminary levy request to fire districts, and I can't remember my list right now. But anyway, then they submit their budgets. And so I entered those numbers into my worksheet that I've triple-checked and had Lisa double-check my triple-check, so I have any backup that you might need. If anybody did not submit a budget to me, what that means is no budget, no tax dollars. And so I do have one of those that's going to receive zero dollars from us this year.
Morale Will did not file their budget. They called me the night of, and at four o'clock, I said, "I don't think anybody in the state's there at this time of day."
And we don't calculate that levy. That goes to Sioux County, so ours was an SID, a local SID. The good news is, they don't get a lot of tax dollars, but the bad news is, they didn't get their budget in.
Didn't get any.
All right. Yeah, I certainly wouldn't have any idea on some of these, what they are, but they look within reason what they normally would be.
You can trust me.
Good.
And I'm sending this to all of the political subdivisions to take a look specifically at their numbers.
Okay.
From what they submitted.
So you need us to approve the resolution, is that right?
Yeah, and if you approve them, then I can get them sent off. I believe that the deadline to correct any errors would be October 20th. I don't know if anybody else knows that, if that's what I have.
They still have one last opportunity?
Do they have one last opportunity to get theirs in?
By law, we only have until the 20th to change...they don't have until the 20th to get their budget in. They have until the 20th to correct any errors.
Oh, the budget deal's passed.
Gone.
Okay.
Okay.
Gotcha.
All right, any other discussion on this item? So I'd entertain a motion to approve the resolution, or whatever action you want.
I approve that we approve the resolution for certification of the '24-'25 tax levies.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. We'll go ahead and vote.
You have five yeses.
All right, so the motion's carried. Okay, so I think that's all the items under Board of Equalization, and so I believe we need a motion to go out of the Board of Equalization.
I move that we go out of the Board of Equalization.
There's a second?
I'll second.
We'll go ahead and vote.
Russ?
Hope I hit the right one.
You have five yeses.
So the motion's carried. So that takes us out of Board of Equalization. We'll go to the next item on the agenda, which is road and bridge. Steve Baird, he's on his way up. First item is discuss and consider approval of chairman's signature on the financial reports.
In your packets, you should have received a nice, healthy 60-page financial report from Kelly. Just to hit the highlights on this, the very first page is our financial statement for us. This is something we do every year at the end of the fiscal year, especially right after budgets are passed. A lot of this is repetition budget numbers that you've seen while doing budget, so...
Is it just basically a different format of that?
Yeah, the first few pages are, anyway, as far as that. So the first page that I guess I will emphasize to you the most is this financial statement page, the very first one in there. Down at the very bottom, you'll see where the highway allocation and our little over 3.5 million that we receive, we're required to match 25% of that, which a few budgets meetings a couple of years ago, I emphasized how we've always been at that 30% to 40% range in match, and that we needed to get that up to actually be able to fix some of our asphalt roads and that. If you look at that sheet, this year, we're up to 68%, so we did manage to get a pretty good increase out of that. So hopefully, we can get another 10% out of that, I hope, so...I thought that was a pretty good increase, it's a 20% increase in a year, so...the next several pages there after that are really just the budget that you see. It shows last year's budget, what we expended, and then what this next year's budget's going to be.
Steve, give me a minute to interrupt.
Okay. And then the next one that is, I guess, an important one that will require the chairman's signature, one of these on this budget summary, is the Form 1F. It looks like that. It is the one that we have to put down which projects we spent over $10,000 on for a contractor. So, and we had six projects listed on there, from bridges to our asphalt on Highland. So it looks like that, and it's broke out that way. Behind that is the statute and explaining, you know, the reasons of the statute, those why that has to be approved for that. If you keep going, there's a revenue summary in there, and that, once again, is just kind of a repeat of the whole budget in a different format form. The next one that we have to okay tonight is the board chair and the clerk's signature on our standardized systemized annual reporting. And this is a new sheet I just handed to you tonight because the one in your packet was not correct. So I just changed this because the amount from the motor vehicle tax was last year's amount, not this year's amount. So it's $11,341.78. So if you want to, if you printed out your packets and want to swap those out, that would be the ideal thing to do. So...the rest of that whole packet is the inventory that we show, that we have, which is the same inventory as our officers' inventory we submit at the end of August. We have to submit that to NDOT also for our inventory, both material and equipment, so that's a majority of your papers there, is the whole inventory list all over again. And then at the very end is the cost accounting for the equipment. We have to show how our expenses for our equipment in that report. So that's just kind of a quick, fast, I guess, overview of that thick packet that you got for your report. It's nothing different than we've ever approved in the past, just the numbers are different for projects we've done in budget, of course, budget numbers for budgets that's passed or hasn't passed, so...so I guess, first of all, on the first agenda, we would need to approve the, have a motion to approve the chairman's signature on the Form 1F, which shows our five, six projects of over 10,000 we paid contracts for. And then on the standardized systemized annual reporting page for that one there, that we are doing a system of annual reporting that we're required to do. All four of these items on this are all related to the same resolution that Kelly has in there at the very end here when we get to it, so they're all related to each other. So I maybe didn't have to break them out individually like this, we could have just done it in one motion, but I broke it out, so...
So we need a motion to approve the chairman's signature on the financial support reports submitted.
That would be fine, yes.
Wouldn't that be close enough?
Yes.
So do we have a motion to that effect?
I'll make a motion to approve the financial report as presented by the road and bridge superintendent.
And authorize the chairman to sign them.
And authorize the chairman to sign them, correct.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? If not, go ahead and vote.
Can we make sure the right pages get signed? This is there. You have five yeses.
All right. Motion's approved. Those two for now. All right, and then we'll go on to the next part of this. Steve, the discuss annual certification of program compliance.
So this one here is the whole SARS program in a lump sum. There's nine bullets on that page that I'm assuming Kelly put in your packet and you can see it. So what this certification of compliance do is telling NDOT that we are doing these things. We're adopting budgets, we are using engineers when we have to use engineers, we're spending our money on our highways, we're using an accounting system to track all of our money, you know, we're doing cost accounting as far as which roads are getting money spent on them. A whole, you know, gosh, there's a list of them here. You know, the design, that we're meeting their design standards. So that is pretty much what that compliance is, one there says. So we're doing our one and six, that's in here too, we're doing our one and six-year street plan, so...and that one too also requires the chairman's signature to approve that one.
So officially, you need for us to approve the report?
Yes, the motion to approve the annual certification of program of compliance.
And that is at the bottom two of page, it says page two of two.
Two of two, yes, it would be two of two of that one.
All right. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the resolution for certification, annual certification of program compliance.
Okay, is there a second?
I was just going to comment that the agenda just says discuss, does not say consider
So I guess, Phil, do we have any concern about that?
In the context of all these reports, I don't think there is any...
Concern, okay. Okay, so then we can...
I would second the motion.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to approve the annual certification of program compliance. Any other discussion? We'll go ahead and vote.
You have five yeses.
All right, motion's carried. We'll go on to the next part, which is discuss and consider signing resolution with the Nebraska Board of Public Roads Classifications and Standards.
So of course, since you approved all that, there has to be a resolution to back it all up, and that's pretty much what that is. So I can read it too if you want, or if you've read it, that's fine. It requires all the board's signature. It says whereas state Nebraska statute sections 39-2115, 39-2119, 39-2120, 39-2121, and 39-2510 requires an annual certification of program compliance to Nebraska Board of Public Roads Classification and Standards. And whereas the state Nebraska statute section 39-2120 also requires that the annual certification of program compliance by each county shall be signed by the county board chairperson and shall include the resolution of the governing body of the county authorizing the signing certification. Be resolved, the county board chairperson of Scottsburg County is hereby authorized to sign the county annual certification of program compliance, and it's your guys' signature.
Okay.
So...a lot of repetition.
Okay. Any discussion on this item or questions? All right, we'll go with, does anyone have a motion to approve?
I move that we approve the signing of revolution with Nebraska Board of Public Roads Classifications and Standards.
I'll second.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. We'll go ahead and vote.
You have five yeses.
Motion's carried. We'll move on then to what I think is the last item, receive the superintendent's report.
So this here was just really for your benefit, just to look through and see how much money is spent over the year on different items through the, through our maintaining. So a couple of the big ones, you know, bridges, just our maintenance on the bridges, this doesn't include newer rehabs, this is just going out fixing timber bridges or guard rail, that sort of thing. We spent $273,000 last year. Graders, just for maintaining, you know, we're up $625,000 for that. The gravelling clay is at $526,000. So just to maintain our gravel roads, last year, we're up $1.1 million just to keep the blades running and gravelling and doing clay, so on those. Those are just kind of some of the highlights, you know, different projects of what we spend on those. I thought you might want to see, you know, more of how some of the money is spent.
Steve, at what particular point do you need engineer plans or engineer assessments, whatever, when you're out working on the bridges? Do you need them for repair work, or if it's a replacement?
Not for repair work. I would call, for like timber bridge deckwork, we do not need engineering on that, but for like a replacement of it, yes. We'd have to have it...
Okay. So any repair work you're doing, you're fine, we don't have to pay an engineer's fee to do that?
Correct. Any timber decks, which we're doing a bunch right now, we can go in and we just...
Just do it yourselves, okay?
Do it ourselves, yes. So we're not changing the superstructure or the substructure, we're not making changes there, we're just putting new on, so I guess it might be a way to look at it, so...
Okay.
Signs, you know, there's a little over $50,000 for signs, that would mean the time to replace them, whatever's down, plus buying the signs, that sort of thing in there, plus our projects...
We don't make the signs anymore, do we?
We don't make too many anymore, we can make them, but we don't do too many in Ford just because we don't have somebody in there to...
You still have the equipment to do it, though.
Yes, we still have the stuff to do it, so if we need something in a hurry, we can make it, but otherwise, we do most of it, order most of it through, oh, gosh, I can't think of the names, left me now, through the sign companies, our vendors, so Michael Todd is one, and there's another one that we use.
How long does it take to get them normally?
Usually it takes a couple of weeks, if we order them, yeah, it takes a little bit to get them, so...but when we order, we order in bulk, I guess, so if we need stop signs...
Is there a cost saving by doing that, as opposed to us doing our own, like we used back in the old days?
Um, I'm going to tell you, probably no, for the simple fact of the time that pays labor costs, so manpower is probably the biggest one, is why we just don't do it anymore.
You just don't have anybody to do it?
We just don't have anybody to sit in there and make 50 stop signs anymore, you know, so manpower is the biggest reason why we don't do it ourselves anymore, so...we used to, when I first started, there was a guy in there that actually stayed in there, and that's what he did, was make all of our signs. Well, we went away from that and just started ordering them. So, but that, this report is really just for your questions or benefits you want to look at. You know, if you have questions, we can, you can come to the office, we can break it out by road, you know, I got a notebook sitting over here full, we can break it out and tell you what we spend on each road exactly, so if you ever want to know, so...but that's just for your benefit, so...
All right, so...
No action required?
No, no action on that, that's just for them.
No action on that one?
No, that's just for them, so...
All right, we appreciate it, and, yeah, we appreciate all the work you did putting all those together, so I know it takes quite a bit of extra time, so...
All right, thank you.
All right, thanks.
Steve? See you tomorrow.
Okay, I believe that it takes care of all the road and bridge items, so we'll move on down to the next area, the building and zoning, which of course, Bill Maven's the director. This evening, we do have a public hearing scheduled to discuss and consider the approval of amendments to the Scottsburg County zoning regulations, proposed amendments to the updating of Section 5 and other related sections pertaining...
Hang on.
...pertaining to solar energy facilities and conditional use permitting in the Scottsburg County zoning regulations for establishment of regulations and requirements, Section 42, for the application and approval of the conditional use permit for solar energy facilities, and updating the index and resolution history for such mentioned amendments. And so I know that we have both Bill Maven and Phil Kelly here tonight to review what's been done. I'm... We've been anxiously waiting for them to get their new information to us. Phil, do you wanna present something first, or do you want me to go ahead and open the public hearing first? Alright, so let's open, officially open the public hearing, but I do believe that, um, Phil or Bill need to, I guess, make whatever presentation you want to, and then we'll open it up to public comments. Yeah, Phil and Bill. So hopefully we could.
I don't know, I, I got some copies here too, if you'd really like, I'll just send them out over here. And I don't know how you wanna do the comments or questions, if you wanna do it as we're going along, that's kinda how you did it at the planning commission meeting, it seemed a little easier than trying to do them all again, you know what I mean? Because then we have to go back to a certain section. So, it's up to you how you wanna do it.
I guess, uh, Bill, I think it might be important for you to give us just kind of a overview as to where we've been, where we're at now, and then, uh, where we're headed with this public hearing particularly.
So we're just gonna go through page by page what you have in front of you, and we're just gonna scroll right down, section by section.
Okay.
I mean, obviously, we're not just demanding pieces and parts, we're adding an entire document here.
Okay.
This is brand new.
And so, I think it's important to note that we've, um, uh, went through the original application that was, um, uh, rejected, uh, here at the commissioner level, uh, the last time, and was, you guys were asked to, come up with some additional information, uh, concerning the, um, conditional use permit and requirements for that, and that's what you've been working on for several months, and, um, this is the new document, and you're going to, um, review that with us this evening.
We're gonna go through page by page.
Okay.
So I'll just start off, uh, in the, in the regulations, where we had it before was the, was the power generating facility, so we're gonna be more specific, we're gonna replace that in the section five point three oh two, item fifteen. We're just gonna scratch that out and call it the solar ener- energy generation facility for now, and then when we get to the wind, we can either add that to this or just make a new line item on that. This is what we're gonna actually refer to, to our solar regulations. So when somebody comes in to make application, that's what they're making an application for, solar energy generation facility as part of the conditional use permit in the act zone. Any questions on that?
Not for me.
Yeah? See if I can find where that thing's at again.
So before we start going through section by section, just give you a little history of, of the work that Bill and I have been doing on this. We first gathered up, um, samples from other political subdivisions of Wyoming and in Nebraska, and, and did some research about the issues and concerns that the political subdivision would have concerning regulation, regulating this type of use. We have generally designed a document here that has three different classes of uses. One where no permit would be required, and that's for an individual home or individual business, where they're gonna have some panels on the, on the roof or in their yard or whatever. So we, we determined it didn't make any sense for us to regulate the individual use. The second class is a class where there might be a group of homeowners, like for instance in an SID or something like that, or a homeowners association that would want to take advantage of a small solar farm, where it would, uh, be solar panels that would be, um, in a, in a part of the land that they control or decide to use. Or in a commercial situation for a number of businesses would wanna take advantage of a larger sol- solar, uh, array. And they are required to comply with the permit, the application requirements, the decommissioning requirements and, and on, um, on that level. Then we have a utility level, uh, class, which is the third class, and, uh, they are required to fulfill all the requirements of the application process, um, in great detail, and all those details are set out in the document so that they'll know what needs to be in their application, and they'll know what the standards are for how things are gonna be, uh, constructed and, and, uh, setback requirements, uh, fencing requirements, um, decommissioning requirements, the requirements to deal with the fire departments, with environmental issues, with game of parks, and, and those sorts of regulations are set out, uh, in the document. The decommissioning, uh, section, uh, we'll get to it later in detail, but it will require, um, some sort of surety or cash surety. The cash surety is one that we didn't specifically mandate because of the potential problem that if the company goes out of business or goes bankrupt, that surety could disappear. So, um, a surety bond is, is the most likely, um, direction to go because there'll be a third party company that will issue a bond to Scottsbluff County for the decommissioning costs. The amount of the bond will have to be updated every five years, and, you know, the bond will be reissued every year. We've also discovered that the landowner would have its own surety bond, so the hierarchy of how that decommissioning process would be is if the, the project is abandoned, or they, they don't use it, or its, its useful life is gone, the landowner is initially going to be responsible for decommissioning with the project developer. And if project developer and the landowner don't get it done, then the county could do it in the context of, of determining that what's out there is a public nuisance, and to abate the nuisance, we would, we would make demand upon our surety bond to have it taken care of. So, it's a general overview of, of what we developed, and, uh, so, you know, with that.
And I, I guess, um, uh, exactly how we're gonna need to go through this, I know we can't go through it word by word, line item by line item, but, um.
My suggestions, we'll go to s- to sections of it, and, and Bill or, or I will summarize what's in those sections, and see if there's any reason for a discussion about those.
Sounds good.
You're doing great, keep it up.
Okay.
Well, so we start out with, uh, this is a solar energy generation regulation, it's not a wind generation regulation. Our plan would be to work on that after this, this gets developed because of the potential for wind generation in the county. So, the, the first section's just a g- a general overview that we're gonna, uh, these regulations are necessary to protect the health, safety, and welfare of residents of Scottsbluff County. And they're consistent with state statutes, and they incorporate state statutes, and, and they incorporate local, state, and federal regulations, um, by reference and, and by implication without putting all of the state and federal reg- regulations in the document. We incorporate those by reference. So we get down to the types of conversion systems, I mentioned the class one, no permit required, and this will be a small scale one for using individual property, uh, or an individual business. Class two is for the commercial solar energy, which could either be residential or commercial, and, um, it will be greater than twenty five kilowatts, serving multiple, um, homes or businesses, um, in that particular, with that particular generation facility. That class has to comply with the application and construction standards and decommissioning standards. Then class three is the utility, where this is, this is a wholesale utility, uh, class, where they're gonna be generating electricity to wholesale it out to another, um, retail public utility. So, um, I know that OML Public Power, just like in PPBD, they have wholesale facilities where they buy that energy and sold to them for their, uh, energy uses. And that's what class three, uh, describes. These next few paragraphs are kind of, kind of general, uh, provisions that, um, if there's a change in the law, then that doesn't mean we have to start all over. If there's a more strict law, that will apply as opposed to a less strict law. If there's a provision of the regulation that's, a court finds it is, uh, improper, that doesn't mean the whole thing gets tossed out, just that provision. And then we go through several pages of definitions to define, um, what is appropriate and necessary for the language you, we use later in the regulation. And I don't think we need to go through those unless there's questions about a particular definition.
I might have a question that might apply up in the applicability and, but anyway, the simple story is, we only have jurisdiction where we have zoning jurisdiction, right? Um, so, those two mile limits, like is on the city of Scottsbluff and Gearing and maybe other entities as well, but, um, we only have, this only applies where we have zoning regulation, or.
It's our jurisdiction.
Yeah, our jurisdiction, and that's it.
Yes.
Right. So obviously, uh, Gearing's working on theirs now, has nothing to do with us. They had one, um, out by Precision, uh, had nothing to do with us. And so if it's within that, what I think is called a two mile limit, um, it has nothing to do with us, basically.
That's correct, and the, the bigger communities, Scottsbluff and Gearing have two mile, smaller ones typically have a mile.
Okay.
And, and that's correct, so we only, this applies, uh, in the county's jurisdiction.
Alright. Yeah, come up here. I think, I think, uh, what you described, Bill, was that, um, it, it would be time also for the audience to voice a concern if it's, if it's on that specific item, so.
Uh, my name is Mandy Larson, M.A.N.D.I.E. Larson, L.A.R.S.O.N. And on the, um, small solar energy with the individual businesses, so I am working on the REIT grant to get, um, businesses here where they can get fifty percent of the, uh, solar paid for by the USDA. So if I get a group, but they do the USDA grant separately, would that still be under the one where we don't need permits because they're individual?
So if you put one in, on one residential property, or on one commercial business with one owner.
Okay.
No permit. If you're doing a grant application to take care of three businesses with the same generating facility, you would require.
Okay.
That's the, class two is more than an individual business or commercial.
Or like an entire subdivision, maybe, we're gonna have a
Right.
solar array to take care of a SID or something like that.
Right, well each business has to apply for the grant separately, I just wanted to make sure because there might be two or three on a block, right, that will have it.
Will they be connected to one generating facility?
No.
Or will they be, have separate generators?
They'll have separate on top of each building.
Then they'd be a class one.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Um, and I'm probably getting a little bit ahead of myself.
If it's in Scottsbluff or Gearing or, or in Mitchell.
Uh-huh.
We won't have anything to do with it.
Yeah, if it's within city limits, it doesn't apply.
If it's in city limits or within two miles of Scottsbluff or Gearing, or a mile of the other smaller communities, the county regulations will have nothing to do with it.
So that will fall on the city then?
Correct.
Gotcha, okay, thank you so much.
Okay, we'll keep moving forward unless someone, uh, raises their hand or something, but.
Um, unless there's a specific question about definitions, uh, they're kind of self-explanatory, and they tie back to the language that's used later in the regulation, so we don't. So, so folks will understand what we're talking about later in the regulation.
He didn't go into severability.
Say again?
Severability, you have a different.
Yeah, he went through that.
So that's if, if a court determines that a section of this regulation is illegal, then the entire regulation isn't tossed out, just that section. So then we go down to, uh, we're in class two for general site and design standards, and we have road setbacks and structural and ground mounted controls, and requirement to minimize and mitigate interference, um, on, on page five now. Setbacks for, um, public roads, adjoining property owners, and a potential to waive the setback requirement if you have an issue with your neighbor and they say, I don't care, I'll waive the, the five fifty foot or the six hundred foot requirement.
Do you have a question on that case? Go right ahead.
Casey Debus, C.A.S.Y.D.B.U.S. Um, I do have a question about the non-participating existing dwellings. Six hundred and sixty feet and eighth of a mile is not very much when it comes to the class two and class three facilities. I would like you to think about increasing that, so, thank you.
Well, just, how did you arrive at the setback?
Russ, we can't hear you.
Uh, okay, so how did you arrive at the setbacks you proposed?
We considered, um, part of my research is what other, other communities have done, we discussed it in the planning commission, and the, one of the concerns was, um, it's not such a big concern, is it the same for, actually?
Yes.
One of the concerns is if you have a setback along a mile, that's six hundred feet, then you're gonna use up a lot of, a lot of ground. And that was a concern with the application that will be out in the country, so.
There were several of them that were well below six hundred feet, because we went through, and there were some, some of them that were fifty feet from non-participating.
And there, later on you'll see there's some screening requirement. So at the property line, there'll be some, property, or within that property line, there'll be some screening requirement to, um, provide some barrier for a non-participating property.
And here's the waiver where basically he, the, they could make an agreement with somebody who's within that six hundred feet, that maybe, they want specific screening, so they make an agreement between themselves to actually provide some specific screening. Could plant a tree row or something like that. Some way to, yeah, some way to block the view, if that's what they're concerned about.
What, may I ask what the concern is?
I think it's too close to.
And, and for what reason? For, just, for aesthetics, or what, what, what is the reason that you think it's too close?
Construction, noise, the site, all of it.
Well, the, the only construction is gonna be the initial construction, after that, there wouldn't be anybody there other than the person working there and checking on the panels. Is that correct, I'm, I'm assuming?
We actually installed.
But I think that waiver addresses that pretty well, Ken, I think they have an option to, they can visit.
I, I'm just, I'm just asking what, what the concern is, is there, I mean, they're not making any noise, they're not, they're not sticking up in the air.
The waiver provision is to make it less, right, than six hundred feet, or less than fifty feet, or something like that. I don't think it's to make it more, so an adjoining property owner wouldn't have the right to compel the developer to make it more.
I see.
Now, maybe they can visit and, and agree, uh, but the waiver is to make it less.
Decrease the setback.
Okay, okay.
So I, I think it's gonna be addressed later in the document, but while we're here talking about six hundred and sixty feet, what is the rec- what is the screening requirement at six hundred and sixty feet?
I, I, the screening requirement is to have some sort of fancy vegetation or berm that's going to be along the property line where the solar. that's going to be along the property line where the solar farm will be located.
In between the non-participating members. So if you have a budding and they're both participating members, you wouldn't necessarily have to have screening there. But we want them on the roads, I believe, and what was discussed before. Three hundred feet off the road because that's what the state of Nebraska likes, snowdrift. So we wanna stay far enough off, we don't have any issues with that. So if we get here a little further, you'll see where we have the screening. Now, up off the properties, I think we're still talking fifty feet. If it's just between the property line, you could have the screening within fifty feet. Obviously, the closer the better to block view.
Um, it's, the screening is in, in the next page on ten.
Sure, is there anything else here you want to touch up off of you down there?
No.
Okay.
Unless someone has a question about those other provisions.
Is your interference with electromagnetic communications?
You got decommissioning on number six that you need to touch on, maybe?
The de, decommissioning plan is in another section.
Okay.
They, they had to have a plan and we, we have details about that plan and how it will be secured later in the document.
I know that on number three, the issue of interference on electromagnetic communications, I know the Prestons have a question about that when we get to class three stuff. I think they wanted to address something with that.
And these are just sort of general issues that I saw in doing my research that were in a lot of regulations. So I don't know what, what sort of problem there would be, but they gotta minimize and mitigate, that doesn't mean it has to be absolutely, absolutely gone, but it's kind of like if you're close to a high power, power line, there can be some, could be some interference. And so, number four, that requirement is there. They gotta take steps to try to minimize and mitigate those interferences.
There's your decommissioning plan, but we'll get into it further in depth.
And there's a, plan must submit, uh, and fences will be, yeah, that's... The details of decommissioning plan is later in the document. They have to have one in their documents and the details are spelled out later. And like number seven, it's a great catch-all, as I mentioned. They gotta comply with state and federal regulations. So we tried to lay out some of those requirements, but we didn't attempt to lay out every possible state or federal regulation in this document. But number seven requires them to comply with every state or federal regulation that may affect this development, this type of development. You can, as a county board, you can impose other requirements if necessary so that when you see an application, you may say, "Well, I look at this application and I think there should be other requirements." You have the ability to do that based on the individual application.
Usually for like a site-specific case, maybe the topography of the property or something. You see something you don't like, could be drainage or something, you can actually tailor the conditions of mitigation for that.
But that's only prior to the approval. Once it's approved, it's over.
Go ahead, go ahead.
That's okay, I'm just saying, that's the way it's written.
You would, you would make it as part of your conditions, like your required conditions.
So if you oppose a requirement as a part of approval, then they must comply with the requirement or you can stop the process.
So you were at the bottom of page five, is that right?
No, we're in the middle of...
We're on top of six.
Seven now?
We're in the middle of six.
We're on top of six.
Top of six.
Okay.
Right there, you had your E nine one one address.
Ken talks about some screening and fencing, using vegetation, trees, shrubs, plantings, fences. And that has to be included in the application documents, what their plan is for that. And that will give you a chance for a property owner to address that issue and for you as a board to address the issue and impose requirements if you think it's appropriate to deal with a property notice concerns about a setback issue. Uh, number twelve, reasonable measures taken to mitigate specific adverse legal impacts.
That's for the glare and the reflections.
So that's, that's the, the application, general application requirements and standards for class two. And then you go into class three and the format is somewhat the same, but, but some of the setbacks are different.
Let's go through this one thoroughly.
So we start out with the yard requirements as far as the floodplain. The setbacks for public roads for participating and non-participating property owners. And we have the same sort of setback for a non-participating existing dwelling. And then a larger setback for state and national parks. Same waiver language that a property owner could, could agree to a, a smaller setback. And then number two here is, is addressing screening for the utility level project and it's different than the class two project.
And that's just because of the fifty percent of the screening.
There is a, Bill, you, you found the electrical code that requires fencing, security fencing.
Yeah, it's, it needs to be fenced around at least seven feet.
Yeah, I wanted to ask about fencing for, for wildlife and things. Are they gonna be fenced to keep deer and local things out of them?
They're actually fenced for security. It's part of the national electrical code because it's, it's a high voltage facility.
Correct.
So trying to keep anybody out.
Right, yeah, right. My, my thing is, is that with the wildlife, if they can get in and can't get out, there's not gonna be water for them in there possibly at times.
I don't know, can a deer jump a set of things?
I don't know.
I don't think so.
They're in the, they're in the craziest places.
Well, and, and I guess it's a tough matter, if they can jump to get in, I don't know.
They can jump to get out.
Possibly.
Yeah.
The, so seven foot is that requirement that you're talking about?
Is that in this?
That's a state.
Well, that's a, it's the national electrical code. So they have, they'd have to do that as part of their, they have to pull a permit with the state electrical provision.
Okay, I was hoping that was, you know, there would be at least, at least six to seven.
There's no provisions in there about leaving openings, I can look for that.
No, I didn't want to open it. I just wanted to be sure that, that the animals can't get in, that way they can't starve.
It needs to be secured at seven feet or you can go six foot with a one foot of razor wire at the top.
Let, let's hope that's the way it works.
Sir?
Okay, my name's Mike Norby, M.I.K.E., N.O.R.B.Y.
Thank you.
I'm not too far from where I think this is gonna be, but I got a serious question. Now you brought up livestock, I mean wildlife. We've got problems out there and I apologize for my presence today because I've been working trying to eradicate a prairie dog town. And then prairie dogs move into there. Who's gonna be responsible to clean that mess up? Prairie dogs are an issue south of Lyman. They're a very big issue. Who's gonna be responsible if a prairie dog town goes into that solar farm? Now we got a bigger issue. Who's gonna clean that mess up?
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
What if your neighbor doesn't have a solar farm? And all, all of a sudden his infant state, infant has a lot of prairie dogs come on?
Now, according to, I don't have it written in front of me, but I did research it up. You can ask Sarah, she'll get it for you. There is a state statute in the state of Nebraska, you are to control the prairie dogs on your property.
Okay, would, would that not be the answer to your question? Would that be the property owner's responsibility?
Property owner's responsibility.
Okay.
So I just want that clarified, that if a prairie dog town comes up underneath the solar farm, somebody's gonna have to clean this mess up.
So remember I pointed out that you had to comply with all state and federal regulations?
Yes, I did hear that.
That would be one of them. You guys do your prairie dog eradication.
So the state regulation that says if you're the property owner, you have to control that.
Right, but we got a little problem with that because right now, we have a problem getting the chemicals we need to clean them up. So we got a big issue there. But anyway, if you're gonna throwback on the property owner, so if the problem does arise, we can go right after that property owner and hopefully can get it stamped up before laws.
Just like you would your other neighbor? Same, same thing? Same thing, yeah.
So we have some of the same language about mitigating interference with communications. Environmental impacts have to be considered. You'll, you'll see all that in the application. Again, comply with all state and federal regulations. The county board has the right to impose the requirements as necessary and have an E nine one, one address. So any questions or comments about those requirements? Then we built into the regulation that the developer, before they could even file an application, must have a public forum, a public hearing. Not here, but like MPPD did when they were doing their power line. I was invited to two or three public forums down at Hampton Inn and went down there and just to find out where that power line was going and put my vote in to say that it wouldn't go past the front of my house. And it didn't, how about that? But I, I, I thought it would, it made some sense because there were comments about how will we know they're, they're coming with this application? And we put this requirement in that they have to publish notice of this public hearing, public forum, in, in the newspapers, published in the county, and mail a notice to every property owner within two miles of the project. So everybody within, has a joint land within two miles is gonna get a letter. So they get an opportunity to find out about the project before the application is filed so that there's information and transparency about what, what the plan would be. They must then provide that information to the county when they make their application. What are the results of what information was, was made available at the public forum and what were the concerns addressed at the public forum? That gives you, because you always ask, well, who knew about this? And how'd you advise the neighbors? So we've put this in there to have a mechanism to compel the applicant to do this before they file their application.
Can, can we add some requirements there to include radio ads as well as social media? We, we don't have a newspaper that gets the circulation that it used to. I think the thought there Charlie was if it's gonna, if it's gonna get the newspaper, the radio's gonna pick up on it. I would just like to make it a requirement.
Yeah, we have newspapers published in Scottsbluff County and on appropriate websites. That's, that was the intent of the planning commission, is to have them put it out on, on social media. And, and that they would have to tell us what they did to comply with that when they come make their application. That was our attempt to, to address that issue. If you, if we need different language or, then we certainly can amend this or modify this because we have the basics in there, but if you have some specific language, then we can consider that.
Go with Charlie, I'd like to see it amended. I'd like to see radios included, radio stations. We, our radio station is, they've had a lot better than the newspaper. I mean, they, people, everybody can get access to that, you know, basically free.
How many radio stations are you talking? Wow.
But right now, we're getting basically one radio station.
I mean, KNEB is the main one around here and honestly, I look at KNEB's Facebook more than I do the Star Herald.
Absolutely.
That's why we put appropriate websites. So the news, be on the newspaper website, we hope it'd be on KNEB's website. But if you wanna have radio, social media.
The difference to think about is there's a cost to putting an ad on the radio. And if you get the information to the kneb.com, that is free.
You just require a press release.
He's just trying to route it so it gets to that.
With a press release, press release would be fine.
Okay, I think that's appropriate to...
I just wanted to say, my husband...
Whoa, 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 I'm not gonna let that start without you coming up here.
But follow-up comments need to be at the microphone too, if you could.
Vicki Stoll, V.I.C.K.Y.S.T.O.L.L. I just would like, I guess, radio also added. My husband is not techie, so he doesn't do websites. I'm so-so with it. He listens to KNEB most of, all the time. So I personally join them with, I'd like to have radio specifically. Because to me, that's ambiguous. You're assuming social media is gonna mean radio. I consider social media like Facebook or something and I, I try to stay away from Facebook, that kind of thing.
Thanks. Someone said, and I, I think it makes sense, and that's, press releases to local media, including local radio stations, local newspapers. And those change from time to time. So I don't know if you want to fully list them, but if they would have to tell us who they sent those press releases to when they, when it ends up being brought, then I think, and maybe that's what it's saying, but if we, if they were required to put out press releases and distribute them to all, what I'm gonna call all local media, including social media.
That covers the rule.
I think so.
Right, and then it would cover those, it would be all radio stations, basically. And then it would be, it would be at that point the radio station's responsibility to, to get it on the air or however they wanted to do it.
It would be a newsworthy item for them.
Right, right.
Yes. So public, a public notice in the newspaper.
And press releases to radio, TV and newspapers.
There you go. So my, my comment was gonna be, when you make a, when you do a public notice in the newspaper, you have to pay for that to be in the newspaper.
Right.
And if you do a press release to the radio station, they don't benefit financially whatsoever. It is up to them to fill their airwaves with your information at no cost to the applicant. So maybe it would be appropriate to, to have some advertising.
And, and...
I don't agree with that personally, but...
Well, and, and I'm not sure how to, some advertising on chest radio or...
Yeah, to you.
And the public notice in the newspaper, we were used to having legal notices in the newspaper.
Well, you're gonna, you're going to have a public notice for your planning commission meeting, correct, Bill?
Yeah, this is far down the line, we're still talking about this.
I, I, I know, but what I'm trying to say is that you're going to have a public notice for your planning commission meeting and you're gonna publish the agenda like you do anything else. And that, that is available and the Star Herald has done a good job about picking all of those up and making sure that that's all covered and, and also wherever KNEB is, right back here.
From the corner.
K, KNEB picks it up also. And as, as volatile as this particular issue is, I don't think it's gonna be something that's just swept over to the side. I think between the Star Herald and, and KNEB, just like the article that came out today or yesterday about us discussing these proposed changes tonight, there's a nice big article about it. I don't think it's gonna be an issue that people aren't gonna know about it. And to have to spend extra money to do something, whether it be for advertising or whatever you wanna call it, I don't know that that's necessary, I don't agree with that either.
Okay, I may, maybe my concern needs to be addressed at the state legislature because the state legislature requires public notices in the newspaper. And as, as we move away from the print and that sort of stuff and then... And as, as we move away from the print and that sort of stuff and then as social media and radio become more important to getting messages to the public, maybe that, maybe my concern needs to be addressed.
I, and remember that they have to send a written letter to the couple of property owners within a two mile, like, two mile radius of the project, which, which would address, uh, a, a non-participating landowner and they, those are the ones potentially really affected.
Those are the ones that won't.
As opposed to someone who lives in the middle of Scottsbluff.
One thing I didn't see addressed in here, we have, I think this bumps up to the state line in Wyoming and Nebraska, is that right? It does, it, there's a buffer in there? If it would, I mean, is there anything in there that says we, we have to contact people other states?
No.
These are only so.
We have enough trouble taking care of our state.
Okay, so you don't notify anybody in Wyoming if we built right up to the state line?
Well, I require to.
Well, according to this, you say all adjoining, I, I don't know if it matters what state they're in, I still think we should be required to notify.
Well, it says, if they're gonna build right on the state line, then they've gotta get a notice to everybody within two months.
That's okay, that's what I'm saying, that's why I just asked you, if you're gonna get notified.
And I think that, I think that it's appropriate, we add the language and press releases to radio, tele- television and, and print media in the county. And they can do what they want with it, but that's certainly a good addition.
And there's a difference between a press release and a public notice.
Yes.
That's correct.
So I, we add that.
But my question is still, if they're within a half mile or a mile to the state line, are we gonna notify people one mile in Wyoming?
Well.
According to that, it says we will.
It says we will, right.
You just told me we will.
No, I'm saying that, that we, we don't regulate what happens across the state line. But that says for the public forum, they've gotta send a letter to everybody within two miles, and we don't say within two miles of land in Nebraska.
Okay, just so it covers those people as well.
So maybe look at that and say, well, let's, let's stay two miles away from Wyoming or something.
Well, yeah. I don't think that, just so they're notified.
So I was, I was happy we, we included that language, cause I think that it addresses lots of concerns the public has and you have about people knowing about it. Okay, then we go on to the application requirements, these are both for class two and class three, um, and.
A J, right, A J.
A J. Um, so it talks about, um, there's been some discussion about this, we're changing the first line, say the owner and the operator will have to do the application because a conditional use permit will be issued to the property owner. So we're, we are making that change and it may be in the version, it's right there, okay? Then, um, in number A, I think it's, and, and the owner and the applicant must sign the application. And in A, this is a, an issue that we've added, that the owner of the prop, project must be identified and you have to be able to look at the chain of ownership. So if an LLC is owned by another LLC that's owned by another LLC, we have to get all the way back until we've got all the ownerships, the chain of title from the ownerships, so that you can evaluate that, so that there's not a foreign government or, or foreign entity in that chain of ownership that you don't know about. That's the purpose of that language. The same thing for financing. The source of financing must be identified and whether any source of financing is from a foreign entity or affiliated foreign government. Why can we do that? Right now, if you buy a piece of property in Scottsbluff County, you must sign an affidavit that you're not affiliated with any foreign government. Because of a federal law concerning states of, of, is it terroristic states or whatever? So we're prohibited from, um, doing land ownership and there's gotta be disclosure because of a federal law involving Iran and South, or, uh, North Korea and those sorts of states. So that affidavit has to go into the, the, uh, state treasurer, who must file a report apparently with the federal government. So, uh, we had some discussion about that with the planning commission. I think that gives commissioners the ability to know who's coming into your county, to know where they're from, to know whether they have any foreign government affiliation, so you can evaluate the application on that basis. So everybody's all excited about China owning land in North Dakota within ten miles of the Air Force Base and things like that. Well, we don't have an Air Force Base, but you'll be able to make a, evaluate an application with that information, okay? Then we get down to the more mundane things, we gotta have a survey map. We've got to, um, see preliminary leases with landlords. I don't think we care about how much they're getting paid and I wouldn't care if they redacted that, if you don't care, but we, we know there's a land lease. Like an oil and gas lease, that's the context in which this typically comes up, cause they don't buy the land, they lease the land. And so you'll know there's a lease. We have to provide a map that shows structures within a mile. So there, the mapping department can, can produce aerial photos that will show all structures within a mile of the, of the class two or class three project.
Going back to the, uh, lease agreements, contracts and similar related documents. Could we, could we, um, include in there, you know, any, you know, like if, if a landman was involved in, in the, um, sc- scouting of the, of the, of, of finding the land for the energy company?
I don't understand what you mean.
A lot of times, these companies will, will contract with a landman to go out and, and inquire about, um, the property owner's willingness to engage. So I, those, I, I would like to know if, if or who those landman people are.
So it'd be the broker?
The broker, yeah.
Okay, sure.
Let's make a note of that, like that's.
Yeah, we could add that to that provision, disclosure of, of any brokerage agreements.
Yeah.
Brokerage agreement, yeah.
Tell me what, what's the purpose of that Charlie?
Uh, I think there's, um, I think if there's any, I think it helps identify any conflicts of interest if there were any, um, you know, if I was to go out and be the landman on this deal and I'm voting yes for this thing to pass, I think, I think that conflict of interest needs to be able to have light shown.
Well, and, and if, if a member of the board is a broker, then they have a conflict of interest and wouldn't participate in any decisions.
Right, and that's why we, we would want those to be.
But there's a state law that requires anybody who's a broker to disclose that, anyway.
So, so the, let me get this straight, that, we're concerned about the person that's going out and negotiating or even talking to a landowner? That we need to know who that individual is?
Yes.
And for what purpose?
For the reason I just said.
If, well, you, you mentioned that it was one of the board members, obviously, you wouldn't do that. Most of these companies have their own people that they send out to negotiate land, and I'm assuming this company did exactly the same thing. So why, what, what difference would it make to us who was negotiating?
You say the state has a statute on that now?
Yeah, you have a conflict of interest provision under the County Land Disclosure Commission, that you all have to sign and disclose conflicts of interest.
Okay.
And if you.
Yeah.
Were a, an individual involved in helping to find this land for the developer, then you have to disclose that and recuse yourself from any consideration.
That's a conflict, exactly. And, and, and that's not what I'm concerned about, what, what, what the concern is, is to, the requirement to identify who that person may or may not be, I, I don't know. I, I, I still, I'm not a hundred percent sure that that's necessary.
Well, that's for the five of you to decide whether it's necessary to.
I, I, I understand, cause as I say, most of these companies, and I, they're not here to represent themselves, but I think most of those companies have their own people that go out and negotiate land or whatever it is with the, with the owners. I, I don't know what it's.
What's your recommendation on that item?
So I actually work with Wyco, uh, Wynden Solar out of Cheyenne, and we are actually coming down to the paint handle in Nebraska. Now, I have actually been involved helping Bano County with the one that you guys turned down. And there is a lot of foreign entity in that one. I'm not gonna say anymore because of confidentiality, but you get the drift, right? I actually agree with Charlie, just for the fact, a lot of foreign countries, especially China right now, right? Try to get in with somebody who is a US citizen. So having the broker disclose itself, I think is a great idea, because then you get a little bit more background about the project. And I'm just saying this from a solar company, because we're USA and we wanna help keep that USA in our communities. And China is really working really hard right now in the solar industry. So the more investigating you guys can do, we are all for it.
Thank you, the, um, so what I can envision is, um, the solar company is going to hire someone, a, I'm assuming if they're signing up leases, they're gonna have to be a licensed real estate, um, agent, licensed in the state of Nebraska. And, um, but they may hire a firm from local, they may hire a firm from anywhere across the state, or they could hire a firm from outside the state, as long as they're licensed in Nebraska real estate, um, brokerage firms. And, um, if so, then, um, it's, they're probably hiring possibly a firm or possibly an individual. And, um, I can understand the thought that, um, there could be some concern if that brokerage company was representing someone that had alternative motives, meaning someone from another country or whatever. But, um, do we have a provision in here that later on, we're gonna find that out, I guess?
It's up above, quote A. Right there.
Yeah.
Foreign, foreign entity or affiliated foreign government ownership for both, both ownership and financing, they must disclose that in the application.
And I don't, I don't think you need to be a licensed real estate agent to negotiate a lease, I don't, I don't believe. I may be wrong, I've been wrong before, but I don't think you have to do that.
I've negotiated several.
It's when you negotiate them for somebody else.
Not on real, yeah, real estate leases.
Doing it for yourself, you don't have to, but when you're doing it for somebody else.
For a fee.
For a fee.
Right, then.
So it's, it's, uh, uh, it's just more information, and if you want more information, then there's nothing wrong with that.
Well, I guess, what's the reason, what, what, what would be the reasoning to, or what would be the, the cons to having that additional information?
For the interests of the counties.
Ken? Uh, yeah, well, you can't talk back there, Ken. I said Ken, but I meant Kim.
Kim Bowman, uh, seventeen fifty-five Nineteenth Street in Gearing. Who cares who's negotiating with the landowners? Are you greedy, do you want a piece of the action? You guys are trying to kill the pooch again. Just give it a rest, for God's sake, and this Chinese infiltration, Senator Harden's gotta quit this proliferation of garbage.
So it's a, it's an issue about, you have to weigh what you have, we're gonna get a copy of the lease or contracts or related documents, whatever the landowner has with the developer or the project owner, we're gonna get that information. If you want, there's no con to getting information about, about, uh, who represented the developer to get the lease. Um, there's no dismanis to it, it's just more information.
We just take a straw pull on the temperature of the board to, to see if it's something we wanna include?
I don't have a problem with it.
I would like to include it.
I don't think it's necessary.
Probably not necessary, but I don't, it's not, it's just a couple of words.
I like the idea of more information.
If, if it's simply, um, uh, requiring them to disclose who those people are, or firms, I guess, uh, I'm not.
Okay, we'll, we'll add that in.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I'll just, uh, till they'll be required, required to disclose, uh, uh, the broker agreement or their representative who negotiated the lease.
Okay.
Okay.
So which number are we down to?
We're at down to D.
Okay.
So we got, that's the aerial photos, so we know, you'll be able to see what, what, uh, land uses and existing residents and buildings and state parks and that sort of s- of information within a mile of the borders of the project.
Okay.
Okay? And then we got communications again, and we've got, uh, future land use, effects on future land use in F.
The, um.
I have a question for.
Go ahead.
If you don't mind, Reg, you'll have a question, if, can you still graze with those Americans that graze, uh?
Mark?
Come to the podium, mark the mic.
Yeah, come to the podium and Russ trying to speak into the mic and.
Okay, if I stand over here, he has to look.
Yeah, I know, so that's good, and this is one of the specific items you asked.
I was gonna wait for the intersection, but yeah, since I'm here now, so Reginald Preston, three seven one nine, Five Oaks Drive, Scottsbluff. Out of your question there, Russ, yeah, you can graze between panels, actually, actually called agrivolt takes. Uh, Colorado State University's dumped a, a boatload of, uh, research and investigation to figure out how to grow crops between panels, to run sheep between panels. There are some folks that are trying cattle, but anybody with cattle experience is gonna be concerned about them rubbing and knocking pans down, so I'm not sure if that's realistic, but yeah, absolutely, you can run.
Yeah, that's what my question, how you gonna? So smaller, uh, animal, probably llamas or smaller critters like that?
No expert in llama, but sure.
Well, for instance.
Yeah, for instance.
Bigs would be a little tough, I think.
Potentially.
So that does help with the vegetation, so that'll help with the fire issues and things if you can keep it grazed so that you don't get a real tall vegetation stand, that was my thought on that.
And they've, and again, this is, you know, I feel like we're sort of the shiny object in the room, cause we're working with Dunlay on the application, but this ordinance has got nothing to do with Dunlay, except that they may reapply, uh.
Yeah, this is all conditional use for you guys, basically, is what you're saying.
It's conditional use for everybody.
Well, everyone, yeah.
For everybody.
All, all those who shall come and ask for such a development.
The landowner.
Right.
This wasn't prepared in consultation with any landowner.
Right.
And it will affect every landowner and every project in the county jurisdiction.
In the future, right.
Didn't consult with, uh, consulted with the landowner about, uh, the bond issue, because I was raised at the planning commission and I did some inquiries with bond companies and sent you that information.
Are, are you grazing that land now, Reginald? Uh, no, it, most of it is in general CRP, so it's just totally idle. Uh, there's a section of it that's in grassland CRP that could be grazed but is not currently, and it is recently out of CRP.
Okay, but you normally graze it, don't you, and that's what you do, you don't plant weed on that out there?
No, we're not planting crops on it, it's all planted, the grass.
So you normally graze it?
It could be, well, the general CRP can't unless you're in a drought condition, which perhaps we are, if you ask in our CS. Uh, it could be grazed if they release it. General, uh, excuse me, grassland CRP can be grazed, uh, if you meet the requirements spelled out by that program, it's just a different program. All right, since I'm here, uh, good evening, gentlemen, thanks for the opportunity to comment, Mr. Kelly's point, uh, they certainly didn't consult us except for the questions that the board came up with and it wasn't really a consultation with us as much as, uh, they asked, uh, did we have protection for the decommissioning aspect on, on the Dunlay project that they were proposing called Citulon? So broadly speaking, I appreciate the county's expeditious work, both Bill and Phil, once they came on board, uh, moved quite quickly to get through this. Uh, so we appreciate them, um, you know, using efficiency of time, and they've crafted a document that we feel like should provide a stable playing field for all parties, subject to tonight. for, uh, all parties, uh, subject to tonight's discussion. I think we're probably almost to the halfway point, maybe we got a while to go here yet. Um, and for the Planning and Zoning Commission, they did a good job listening to all competing parties. There were, uh, folks who had plenty of input in that session. Uh, there is one point that we didn't raise at the Planning and Zoning, uh, Commission meeting, 'cause we hadn't even considered it yet, but once they got through that process, and Bill had incorporated all their comments, we took that document and stepped through it as if we were the developer, uh, to say, well, how would this go? Uh, and to the point that Mr. Harris has raised a couple of times, the example I have is the communications consideration. I think that's paragraph E in this section. Yeah, consultation regarding potential interference with existing communication facilities within the project area. Which is to say, we, we're setting up potentially for some catch twenty-two issues, because if I'm a communication facility in the project area, I need to have detailed engineering behind what the system design's gonna be, physical locations of equipment, substations, transformers, voltages, uh, you know, physical proximities, and none of that exists before a conditional use permit. So to require such a thing to exist for the county to review, uh, it becomes a catch twenty-two, 'cause you can't have the communications company look at it if it doesn't exist, and it won't exist without a conditional use permit. And there's maybe a couple other examples in there, but, uh, just to add as, as simply and succinctly as I could possibly put it, and Phil may have a better way to say this, he's been talking a lot longer than I have. Uh, in the event that one of the below requirements, uh, of the requirements for the conditional use permit cannot be submitted at the time of application due to external stakeholder constraints, uh, or project timing requirements, these elements of the application shall be submitted, shall, being the keyword, shall be submitted at a later date, not later than the application for a building permit, as approved by the Board of Commissioners at the time of awarding the CUP, and then that refers to section forty-two eighteen, which is, we'll get there in a minute, but that's what tells you guys, uh, how to get your application awarded or not, and then all the requirements that follow from that. So, um, again, that's just one example. We could probably pick out a few more, maybe they'll become present, uh, or obvious as we go through the rest of the section here. Um, but given the language you got before you tonight, and as evidenced by the fact that multiple times here, we've said, uh, well, Dunlay or Citula or that project, uh, you know, it's the, it's the, if we asked to do this a year ago, we would be not nearly as smart as we are now, because we've been through the public meetings, we've been through the public hearings, both with this board, with the Planning and Zoning Board, uh, and now we've even got legal counsel on behalf of the county that we were completely lacking when all of this started last winter, so, um, you know, uh, we'll get through the rest of it, I'm sure there'll be some more comments, but it feels like we've got a fairly concise set of rules that, uh, everyone's getting a chance to weigh in on, that hopefully will allow for a level playing field for you five, all of the five who shall follow behind you, uh, to have a chance to regulate this. Yes, Russ?
I was just wondering if, if we could move that back into the, uh, planning just a little deeper. If, in your notification to the two-mile radius around the project, I think somehow we need to notify the landowner that they need to notify any leases that they have with cell towers and things, that those people come forward to those hearings as well. Because if we, we don't know who's got what leased out there, I mean, we can look at the land, we don't know who has leased cell tower leases and things. That's gonna be, those people can sort that out on this question that he's talking about right now, if we're gonna have electronic problems.
His question is, his comment is different.
Well, it is, but we could move it back if, if we bring the people back that it could interfere with. The only people you're gonna interfere with are local towers or anyone around close by that has a cell tower or a, a communications tower that it could interfere with. And if they're anywhere within that two miles, then they can discuss that, if there's any, anything that needs to be adjusted.
Are you suggesting to define the project area as a two-mile boundary to cover that?
He's, they wanna notify everyone within a two-mile radius that's in the, but, but that doesn't, for a public forum, but and it should include any lease agreements with tower, cell tower companies or radio transmission towers that do remo-, uh, Motorola, you know, uh, repeaters or anything that's in those areas.
But how is the landowner supposed to find out?
You know who you lease to, yeah, you know exactly who you, if you have a lease.
Well, I don't know who my neighbor leases to.
No, you don't, that's what I'm saying. I think we need to, in that notification, when you, if we do the two-mile radius notification, that we ask the landowners to notify any, and if they refuse to do that.
Could be in the letter.
Yeah.
Ask the, ask the neighbor to tell their lease owners.
If they, if, if they don't do that, that's not gonna, and it won't put any pressure on you guys. I mean, that's up to the landowner to notify their leases, I would say.
That's probably echoes how Black Hills built their, or is building their transmission line that's running out there.
Probably so. Uh, 'cause nobody can figure out who all leases to who.
So, um, Phil, I think, um, um, so I think that would be simple enough to have the, just put the responsibility on the, on the landowners' back, that, hey, if someone else needs to be notified about something that's involved with your property, then be sure they, that, uh, you...
I think that's just fine.
You, um, notify them, meaning the property owner notifies them. I think that's, that's a simple way of doing it, and and it puts the responsibility on their back.
And then I think we could back that out and not make that so stringent on this problem, but move that a little further down the road.
How do you mean?
This part that, about the electronics.
Sure.
What he, his question is.
We're about ready to...
We haven't got to.
Bill and I have a recommendation to you about that.
Okay.
Could you like me to sit down, Phil? Is that what you're politely saying?
No.
I can do that.
Oh, you can stay up there as long as you want.
Yeah.
Right. But you're gonna give us a possible solution to this issue?
And, yes.
Okay.
This possible solution is that we don't have a problem with his suggestion that on E, on page eight, and G, which are the two that he addressed in these comments that I saw, that we allow those requirements to be done after, uh, before the building permit is, is, uh, issued. And we're gonna add the language that a building permit must be applied for and issued before they can start or move it, move any dirt, or do any work. So we'd have, we agree with your suggestion, and we're adding, Bill, you, we're gonna put it, put the language in somewhere that they have to get a building permit from the county before they can start any work, and then you won't allow, or Bill won't allow, the building permit to be issued if there's a gap in the application.
So, we would move that out of there?
E and G.
So E and G, I don't wanna cause those to be the focus of this. I just picked them as examples. There could be any number of these. No, I'm, I'm not specifically after those, but those are examples of things that could not be provided to the, to the application, to Bill, because they couldn't be known, because the CUP hadn't been yet awarded. Uh, those were the two that I picked out, uh, you know, standing on the hot seat, trying to find a couple more examples. But if there's, if there is one, then the board gets to hear about it. If there's not one, then that's because they met the application.
It'll never get to the board if you can't make the application because you didn't fulfill the application requirements. See what I'm saying? This should catch twenty-two. He's saying, I can't even take the application unless you fulfill all of these requirements, A, B, C, and so on down the line.
Sure.
The board's never gonna hear it if I can't even get, receive the application.
Right. And I need you to be able to, you and the Planning and Zoning Committee to go, oh, well, they couldn't because, uh, just using E again, it's just a convenient one, because they can't possibly analyze the communications tower yet. So, they will come back after the CUP is awarded to provide that consultation answer, once the plant's been designed.
CUP is gonna be awarded, subject to them, it's gonna be a conditional award, subject to them complying with the requirements that you claim, or they claim are, are not doable.
Unsolvable, yes.
But that completely changes everything you have now.
Well...
Because now we have all these requirements for the application.
It, it, if we put in, put in, at, at the end of forty-two ten, that, and I wanna, wanna say, for example, if the information isn't available with reference to E, section E or section G, and you gotta tell me whether you think there's more of that, that will allow the application to proceed.
Who decides that?
Well...
There's your problem. Who decides that?
Where do you go?
Well...
That's not really how it goes.
Well, I can understand we, that, his dilemma.
Well, I can too. I'm just trying to, how are we gonna make this work with the way everything's worded here?
And I'm not sure we have to make that decision tonight, right here today.
Well, we're not gonna approve this tonight, if we're...
No, I, I don't, I think we're already past the thought of approving it until some modifications get, get done.
But we gotta define those things and get them answered.
No, I think we can't. I think, I think there's a way to say that an application can come forward and more technical information that, um, that would not nor, wouldn't be available, prepared, prior to a conditional approval can be submitted after the rest of the application has been completed. I can see, I see a scenario where that would...
Could there be some language that says, at the commissioner's discretion, E or D could be waived until after the, for the time being?
There needs to be an exception in there, I believe is what you're talking about, where we need to have some sort of exception to these requirements at the time of application.
Yes.
But it has to be...
So we can get to the point where you guys can actually hear what it is they're talking about.
That's right. But they eventually have to come back and provide the information, 'cause everything in here is very solid.
Right.
Yeah, I think...
It's just a timing issue.
Right, right.
I think we can draft that. I think we could put, put language together, and if we need to go back to the planning commission to have them, or back to you next, next meeting or whatever, I think we can put together some language that'll satisfy your concerns and the applicant's concerns, and make that work. I'm confident we can do that.
Okay, I think so too.
Okay.
All right, so we can...
So, so my, my comment was based upon your, your suggestion, is that E is an example of, of an item that, before you go do that work, you wanna know if the county's gonna give you conditional approval, subject to you fulfilling that requirement.
Right.
G is another example of, you don't need to go do all that work until the county, uh, has given conditional approval.
Right.
Then you give final approval after the, those elements of the application are completed.
Right.
Can you put upon a conditional use approval that this would be the step that needs to be taken?
Yes, yeah, we can do that. We can do that.
Something that satisfies, so you guys can move forward.
Right.
So it doesn't hinder them in being able to move forward?
Right.
Yet it still gives us the protection on the backside?
It does.
And, so as long as we can get there, seems like a simple deal.
Yeah, I think we can do that.
And who better to write that stuff than?
Phil Kelly.
Phil Kelly, our attorney.
Phil, listen, listen, don't, I, I appreciate those comments, but Bill and I worked, worked as a team on this.
Right, oh, I know.
And Bill filled in a lot of gaps in my knowledge that, uh...
I was wondering how you knew all these?
And I should've said the Bill and Phil show, but I didn't.
The Phil and Bill show.
Okay, so hopefully that helps. All right, so I think we heard what he said, we're gonna try and work on.
I think we can do it, yeah.
Okay.
I think we can.
For sure, just the way we have it worded right now, we have, we have a way to...
We have to add some decent language, okay, and bring that back here. Okay, I think we can, um, we're looking, if we go to the next page, we, we have, um, on G, they've got the re, re, meet requirements in the capacity department of, of, what's G? What's DE?
So that's the...
I, I call it the DEQ, but, the old DEQ.
What's NRCS?
Natural resource and conservation.
Service, the federal.
So they gotta, gotta address those issues in the application, and I can understand why they don't wanna go out and do all that work until, until they know that the county is receptive to the basic application. And then they have to fill in the gaps with those things, and you have to approve the final. You have a conditional approval and a final approval. So that might, those two might be weeks apart or months apart.
Everything in a conditional use permit has to be met somewhere along the line, or intended to be met.
And you won't have final approval?
You won't have final approval until a lot of that is done. That's why they call it conditional use.
And we, do we see H, that we're, we're addressing some environmental issues, we're, endangered species, habitat issues, um, uh, whether there's a fish and wildlife issue, they've got to, they've got to gather all that information. Noise and glare study, um, structures, standard drawings for structural components for buildings, and, uh, whatever's related to this sort of project. Then in K, um, an engineer's report to that, about the need for the project and the size of the project, um, copies of contracts in L with, with WAPA or whoever it may be for transmission. So we know that, that they're gonna build this project, and they've got somewhere to, some way to transmit the energy into the grid.
Where, where are we at on the page right now? We're on?
We're on, I'm on K and K. And then L, L is the contracts with the utility connection. That's basically where, gonna go to WAPA or MPPD or somebody else like that. No one said it's going to MPPD, I'm just using that as, as an example. Um, you'll have a report on what information they learned from the public forum, and proof of compliance with the Nebraska Power Review Board statute of requirements for a privately developed reviewable engine facility. So that, uh, Nebraska Power Review Board is designed to have requirements in case a local subdivision doesn't have requirements. And I've talked to their director, and he says that they have to satisfy the power review board at least thirty days before they start, start any work, that they've satisfied some of the identical requirements that we have, so...
So going back to L?
Yep.
Um, it, it's a, is a little vague, it just says copies of any contracts with electric utilities. So, is that, I mean, we're, before we were talking about an interconnect agreement, but that's, that would be months, if, or probably years down the road from the CUP application. So, so what sort of contracts are we talking about here?
I'm assuming that they're not gonna build this unless they have an interconnect agreement or contracts with, for example, WAPA or somebody to take the energy.
So, so one of the, one of the issues we ran into before was, we had a, what Dunlay was, uh, Dunlay was reporting that they had a favorable feasibility study with WAPA. And WAPA would not state that it was a favorable feasibility study. It was a feasibility study, but it was not favorable or non-favorable, it just was a feasibility study. So, and then, and then in that feasibility study, they mentioned that there were three other studies that had to take place prior to an interconnect agreement being, being, uh, agreed upon. And, um, the first of those three studies wasn't even gonna take place for the, for, within the next three years. So, I'm, I'm just afraid that this is gonna put them out too far. What, you know, 'cause they're not gonna have an interconnect agreement, they're not gonna have these, these other three studies that they've, they've got a feasibility study right now. That's all they have.
Um, this language was my creation.
Okay.
And so I'm, well, whatever is more appropriate is what we do.
Could it be any potential interconnect agreement?
I think we discussed about it being, uh, even a preliminary agreement.
Right, because...
Has to be finalized by just any agreements that you have in the work.
Well, just so they know there is somebody else potentially to take this.
Well, that's the, that's the real question here, in my opinion, 'cause this simply says, copies of any contracts. If they don't have any, then they don't have to supply them, is what this says. And so the question's gonna be, um, uh, do they need to show us proof that, um, that, I don't know. I, you know, again...
Think about it, think about it. Do, do you need proof that they've got a customer?
Well, that's, I, you know, I asked a question in this whole thing back, uh, when we first started, and that was, do we, we, generally speaking, when we look at building permits and permitting processes, we're, we're not looking at the viability of the project. That's not the intent of this board normally. And I would still question whether or not that it's our responsibility to look at the financial viability. Um, now, maybe it should be, I don't know, but I'm throwing it out there, that we don't do that for anything else. Even, this is one of the largest permits, building permits, um, money-wise, that we've ever had, in my opinion. Probably the largest, would be my guess. But the second largest, which I don't know what it was, but whatever the second largest was, I don't believe that we were the keepers of financial viability. I don't think we were, I don't think it's our responsibility at any level. Whether it's a hundred thousand dollar project, or a five hundred thousand, or a five hundred million dollar project, I don't believe that that's our responsibility. But I just throw it out there because some have thought that maybe it should be, and certainly we don't want them to go put this all together, three years later, it's being decommissioned, so to speak.
So, I don't have any problem at all.
I'm, I'm guessing, I'm guessing if they're going to spend eight hundred million dollars on a project, they have somewhere for it to go.
I don't have any problem with taking-
I, I, I'm, I'm not a, I'm not a solar energy expert, but I'm guessing if you're gonna invest that kinda money into something, that you have a plan somewhere down the road. And if they do or if they don't, what difference does it make? It's on private property. It's on private property, that's what we keep forgetting. We didn't do that when Co- Crowls put up their, their concrete plant, anybody ask, do you have customers? Are you financially avail, are you financially, uh, ability, your ability to operate? Do you have, can, no, we don't, and Mark's absolutely right, we've never done it before, why are we doing it now?
You know, I just thought that maybe if somebody had talked about that, and so it's there, and I don't have any problem with crossing it.
No, and, and I, I may be in the minority of this, but I, I just throw it out there that we've never done it before. Is it appropriate to do it now? That's the question.
Again, no problem with just crossing, get rid of that.
I, I, I suppose, as long as we have that decommissioning protection, then really, that's about all that I, I think that we can hope for.
We'll take it out.
Okay.
Okay. Um, we expect, uh, Phil and I talked this afternoon about, um, about the issue involving the things that it wouldn't be ready, we expect to add some language like we've already discussed to the end of this section. Okay, so we're ready to go on?
Yep, we need to keep moving.
Okay.
We're gonna-
So, in, in this particular, uh, section here, we're talking about the use of the public roads, and, um, well, the requirement to have a, uh, uh, a survey of the condition of the roads, and an agreement that, uh, if the roads are all torn apart, that there's gonna be compensation to the county, and where they have the ability to, um, including the agreement, traffic routes that will allow, that allow them to use in time of year, they'll, they'll be allowed to use them because potentially there could be some issues involving the amount of traffic and impact based upon weather and whatever. So, this requires them to have a, an agreement with the highway department about the use of the roads and compensation for damage to roads. And, uh, talked to, uh, one of the commissioners about, about which roads we want them to use, so that has language that includes a traffic routes in the third line O B. So that can be part of the agreement for use of roads. And it's, it's unusual to have an agreement with a developer about use of roads. Uh, we don't have it with the Sherber Factory, we don't have it with the Farmers, that sort of thing, but with the amount of traffic, um, this is a provision that I've seen in other regulations from other government subdivisions, so we're, we're including it here.
And, and you're talking about solar, uh, solar, uh, projects?
For, it's part of the conditional use permit only for so, for solar projects.
Strictly solar stuff, okay.
On this side is the project.
Yeah, this side's the project, and this kind of project.
Class three.
Class three only.
Class three, yeah. Then, um, there's some other reporting requirements about issues that I, um, has this waste issues is in C. Um, D is some, in some report about social and economic impact on the county. Um, a requirement that damage panels be removed and recycled appropriately in E. Um, weeds be dealt, dealt with in F. Um, and, you know, we've got a weed control department, and they'll have to take care of noxious weeds regardless, because those are other, uh, local, state and federal regulations.
Just a second.
And a requirement that with reference to battery storage, that buildings must have adequate spacing so that there would minimize the risk of a fire in one building spreading to another building, another structure.
I gotta go back to B on the road part. The very, at, at the, the last sentence on B, it says that the applicant and the board of commissioners will determine what the assessment will be if damage occurs. Do we wanna define that a little more, uh, because I ca- I can't imagine the county coming forward and saying, okay, you did, you did a million dollars worth of damage, and the, and the applicant saying, okay, yes, I did a million dollars of damage. They're gonna say, okay, how about five hundred thousand? There's gonna be some negotiation. So, just to, to avoid any of, to avoid those first steps of that negotiation. Do we wanna define that by saying, um, we'll go straight to, uh, mitigation, or, or have a third party, have a, have a county, uh, road superintendent from a, from another county put the dollar out on this?
Um, then I think we should keep ours, ours-
Well, I, what I'm saying is, we just need to define this a little bit.
Yeah, I got you.
Potentially, if, if you just look at the sentences above, project owner shall be responsible for immediate repair, immediate repair of damage to the public roads and drainage systems stemming from construction, operation or maintenance of the project, wouldn't that cover that?
Yes, but then the next sentence is, is addressing if they don't. If they don't do that.
Steve, how do you think that this would work? You and I talked about it months ago, and we tried to put something together.
Steve, please come up front so we can hear you.
Give us your name and your address.
So me and Phil discussed this, gosh, yeah, a year ago, probably at this time. Um, they did approach us with a, a road agreement, but of course it never went anywhere, but, uh,
Thank you.
You know, I guess that's a, a good question as to how you would pursue that. I think the best bet would be as if we, you know, beforehand, um, it sounded like they wanted to, or whatever company would, this would be with, them and an individual from like myself, or even a commissioner would go out, we would video camera the road, sort, type of sort of deal. See what it's like before they started construction, and then after construction was over, pretty much do the same assessment, and if there was any damages at that time, then that's how we would come up with, you know, if it needed more gravel, you know, we, gravel's, you know, ten bucks a ton, and we put a hundred and fifty ton on them damages, plus labor, we would figure out what that cost would be for them to, to compensate us.
You're, you're talking, we're talking asphalt, I think.
Asphalt, you know, of course asphalt's gonna be a lot harder, there is some methods that engineering can do to see if they did any channelizing and rutting in the asphalt. You know, that would have to be, we'd have, there'd be engineering expense in that, you know, 'cause that's not something we have anything that we could do. To see if there was some damage done, but we'd also have to have them go out beforehand and do the same thing and see if there's any, any damage. You know, I don't know where they're planning on, like on this project for, uh, Dunley, you know, they talked about making their own driveway off of Stiegel. And then they were talking about just using a county road and having their driveway off of that. You know, so if they wanted to make their own driveway on, off of Stiegel, we can regulate where it's at, what type of, you know, they have to use concrete instead of asphalt, 'cause asphalt with trucks, of course, is gonna push easier, you know, and, uh, we could probably even, you know, stretch it out as far as maybe a section out on Stiegel has to be tore out and put, um, to concrete instead of having the asphalt where they slow down and start to turn, you know, so.
Weren't they gonna come in the south end, like on County Road Three?
That was, yeah, that was another discussion off of County Road.
And let me say, our focus here is, I, I'm trying to focus not on this project.
I realize you're- I know, but I'm just trying to-
This is rules for lots of projects.
Okay, right, I'm just using this project, I guess, as a, as a oversight, you know.
And so we gotta be careful that-
Any other project, anywhere else, if it's up on Lake Minotary, we can, we have, we could do the same thing on those, and same on any other roads. It was suggested that we videotape them, take a representative theirs and ours, videotape it before, as you drive these roads, however many miles it is, and then after, and even partway through them, we could, we could, we could do it during, and see if they're keeping up on their end of the deal, so.
I think my question in this, and I think Charlie maybe has addressed it, and that's when we get down to the nitty gritty, and it says, any violation of the agreement will incur an assessment against the applicant for damages, as determined by the applicant and the board. And what if we don't agree? What if we can't come to an agreement?
Well, that's- Got your solution.
What's that?
You got your solution. Either we can agree, we'll, we'll sue them, or we can agree to binding arbitration.
Or with the final?
So, and then, and then-
Final decision by the board.
No, if, if an agreement can't be reached, then the parties will, will engage in binding arbitration.
And who pays for arbitration?
Well-
The taxpayer.
Taxpayer.
How about we just put down the board makes the final decision?
How about the-
Well, then that's, I agree that that's a problem.
I think-
Because they, if the board makes the final decision, and they say, well, you're, you're full of it, and we're not gonna pay that, we have to have a mechanism for getting an, a final resolution.
Well, go to arbitration and let the applicant pay for it. I have no problem with that.
Include the applicant, yeah, and pay for the arbitration.
Okay. Right, let the, yeah.
That's a good idea.
I mean, that forces them to at least be reasonable.
Good one, dude.
So.
So, Steve brought up some other points, I think we need to move further up paragraph now. So when we're talking about those engineering studies where you're using some sonar or some other engineering
Right, right.
methods to determine where, where's the road at pre-construction? Where's the road at post-construction?
Correct.
Because if we're only doing photographs or video, some of this, some of this damage isn't gonna show for three, four years after dozens of freezes and thaws.
Right.
So we really should be doing that pre, that, that engineering type study to, 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 to determine where's the road at now, where's the road at right after construction, and who pays for that?
Right, and, you know, the type of, the, the season when they're doing it, so in winter time, you know, you're probably not gonna see as much asphalt damage as what you would in the summertime when it's a hundred degrees, 'cause asphalt's a lot more pliable when it's gonna be a hundred degrees is when it's five below.
So I don't-
And I don't know if you could put, uh, restrictions on, you know, construction has to be during the winter to keep the trucks on the asphalt while it's colder, so it doesn't wanna push when it's a hundred and hundred and five out, you know, I don't know if that's a viable option or not, but yeah, the sonar would all have to be done during, before, during, you know, and maybe there should be a clause in there that after, after two years, if there's any, it comes up or something.
So, A, I'm sorry, A says a survey will be done, it doesn't say who's gonna pay for it. Third, fourth line down, a pre-conductive survey must be conducted with appropriate jurisdictions.
You, you, that right here, the all expenses of the survey will be the applicant's responsibility.
There we go.
Okay, thank you.
Did I say that one?
And that, so it's there and it's, um,
And the, the type of survey would be determined, uh, depending on what road they're, they agree, we allow them to use.
Yeah, and then in B, it says the applicant shall enter into an agreement.
Yes.
With the Scottsburg County Highway Department.
Yes.
And so, basically, we can call out what we need to call out, and they shall enter into an agreement. I mean, they can he- they can help negotiate some.
And I would think-
But it says they shall
Right.
enter into an agreement, so if there's pressure on them.
And I would think in that agreement, we could stipulate how many times we sonar the road and how long.
We'll get engineers' advice about what's appropriate.
Yeah, so.
Right. Okay, I think it's, sounds like it's in there.
We just discussed some coverage, yeah.
Yeah.
I'll just add an arbitri- binding arbitration provision, uh, at the end of B of the legal agreement.
Right.
Well, if we enter into an agreement prior to construction, then maybe part of that agreement is that the the applicant, um, agrees to uh, assessment of damages as determined by the board of commissioners.
However you think it's appropriate.
I think that's problematic, because if you, if you determine that they owe you two million dollars, and they say you're being arbitrary, there must be a mechanism to solve the dispute.
Okay.
That mechanism without saying more would be, we'd have to sue them.
Okay.
So, do you wanna, you know, if you can't solve it, will, will it be a lawsuit, or it'll be solved by the court here, or do you wanna have binding arbitration? It'll be less expensive, significantly less expensive.
I like the arbitration.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. It'd probably be like, I think just as easy as hiring an engineer, with a higher dependent engineer, it'd actually come in and assess the damage himself, and there's your arbitration.
Yeah.
No, you're talking just asphalt or concrete, the, the gravel road, Steve can assess where gravel needs to be.
Okay, could be a small project too, could be a two, you know, big, wide project, maybe just, you can have one, it's worth the travel on a road, but it's not really gonna sustain it.
And, and this, and this is for class three.
Really, yeah, yeah.
So.
Okay. Going to, are we good there then for?
I think so.
Go on to forty-two twelve?
Alright, hang on just a second, I didn't wanna have to do this, but
It's time, huh?
We're gonna end up taking a break here. Um, and then let me just ask that, to the best extent we can, we're gonna have to try and move this along, or else we're gonna be here all night with a whole lot of other things.
I can, I can do that.
Okay, we're gonna recess for about six minutes.
You are so mean.
So that will be six forty-two. So we'll come, come back to order.
I have two things to turn to.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay.
Yeah, we'll come back to order, and, um, I have asked Mr. Kelly, um, I believe we're on page ten, number forty-two point one-one is where we're at, I believe. And he's gonna try and move through this fairly quickly now. And if you have a thought or a question, be sure you raise your hand or stand up, so I can, uh, recognize you. But we're gonna try and move as quickly as we can here.
Okay, I kinda mentioned the rest of forty-two eleven, so let's go to the next page for safety measures.
Okay.
And these are, these are technical issues that, uh, I think would be covered by the electrical code and those sorts of things, but we're just highlighting some of the safety measures. It, it's, um, the, the controls, that's gonna be taken care of by the electrical code. This, the amount of signage, we're not gonna let them have a mile of signs on the fences alongside of a county road. We've limited the signage, and it's for purposes of the operator's name, emergency phone numbers and warnings. Um, properly grounded, that's electrical code. They have to maintain appropriate liability insurance. And we'll name the county as additional interest holder as part of their facility insurance policy. And the county would receive notice if the insurance lapses. So that the county could make demand that they get the insurance put back in place. So, um, then we, uh, there's gotta be, uh, coordination with the county's emergency operation plan, coordination with the zoning administrator, reach of twenty-two emergency management, and they have to meet on an annual basis and make sure that the emergency operations plan is, is up to date. And to meet with local fire rescue jurisdictions to review the emergency operation plan. I've talked to, um, as you know from my, my memo to you, I talked to the Lyman Fire Chief, the Morrell Fire Chief, the, um, State Fire Marshal, and we've got information from the Gearing Fire Chief and the Scottsburg Fire Chief. Because the Lyman Fire Chief says, if I get a call that there's a problem out there, uh, at that location, then I'm calling for, um, mutual aid immediately. So, that's why it would be, it would be potentially a countywide response, and even ghosting county response on mutual aid, if there's any problem, uh, out. if there's any problem, um, out there as far as a fire incident. Um, I'm ready, if you are, to go on to forty-two thirteen, which is the decommissioning plan. This is the same plan developed by the planning commission. It requires that there be a detailed plan about how they're going to dismantle this entire improvement. They will have to remove everything above ground and everything below ground, the thirty-six inches. So if there are footings, um, for a panel, they're going to have to pull them and get rid of them. So all that has to be done. I, I, you know now that the landowner will have a surety bond for decommissioning protecting the landowner, and we will have a surety bond or a letter of credit or, uh, money in the bank to pay for decommissioning. They'll have to provide us with engineer's estimate of what decommissioning costs will be, and have a bond for that amount in place with the county as the beneficiary of the surety bond, if they choose to go bond. That has to be updated, the amount has to be updated every five years. And I learned from bond companies that the bond would be issued annually, and there'd be an annual fee that they would have to pay to maintain that bond.
So this, there would be two decommissioning, uh, statements, and one with, with the lease, and one with the county, correct?
Memo I sent to you had a copy of a section in the lease.
Right.
Landowner's lease for a surety bond for decommissioning, and we will have our separate bond to the county.
Okay.
And, and the hope there would be that it would all be dealt with the operator and the owner of the property, and it would all get done without us having to be involved.
Exactly.
And then if it did, then we wouldn't have to deal with any of it, and we wouldn't need to have money paid to us.
We'd make demand upon the bond company to go and do the decommissioning.
If they, if they didn't do it.
If it wasn't already done.
Right.
So we are third in line.
Right.
For decommissioning.
And hope we never have to be involved.
Correct, but don't, we don't loop number one.
Right. Good.
Um. And it, this defines as far as the decommissioning, what's included in those costs, and basically they, they've got to restore it to, um, if it's a pasture, they've got to restore it to the pasture, they've got to take out roads and things like that unless the property owner wants the roads to be left there.
Or buildings.
Or buildings, yes. So, um.
Do we have it in that way that it's, has to be returned back to the landowner's specification?
Well, it's not.
And then we have it in there that there's a exception as far as the reclamation goes, that if the homeowner wishes to keep those roads, and let's say you have a still building.
Yeah.
It's his choice, and he can say so.
As long as he has that option, so they don't.
Uh. Right, right here it is, Russell. Unless the landowner requests in writing that the access roads or other land surface areas not need to be restored.
Okay, good.
Um, we've moved on to, uh, forty-two fourteen. The applicant's going to notify us if they make any changes to the application or any criteria in the application. So it'll be up to them to let us know if there's changes, and not, it'll be up to us to discover them. Then we have fees, uh, for the application. The idea here is that the county's going to have significant expense for staff time or whatever to review the application, to make studies. We can hire engineers, we can hire consultants that will be, can be charged back to the applicant. And we've got a basic fee of a thousand dollars plus, a thousand dollars plus five dollars per kilowatt. And what would the salary?
That's on the class two.
Class two, yeah, that's.
Yeah.
And then class three is five thousand dollars plus fifty dollars per megawatt. I don't know how many megawatts there'd be.
Oh, and, so the one that they discussed was going to be over two hundred.
So that money would be available to, to pray expenses that the county would incur. And we could assess additional fees if we need to have consultants and engineers to help us evaluate the, their consultant and engineer's work product. Then we go to.
Just.
I'm going to keep charging here unless you stop me.
Yeah, go ahead, keep them.
Forty-two sixteen is coordination with local fire departments, um, as part of the emergency management plan, um, which involves site visits and whatever. And I talked to one of the fire chiefs, and he says, "You know, we probably wouldn't do an annual site visit unless there's a big change, and getting people together to do that at challenging times." But that's a requirement for coordination with local fire departments. And I gave you information about the potential lithium battery issue. I know that was a concern about fire there. And everybody I talked to up and down the line says, "You've got to drown the lithium battery fire, and if you can't drown it, you let it burn out." And an example of a lithium battery fire is a Tesla fire. Um, so tha- that's the, the standard, that's why we would have a building separation, um, and hopefully they wouldn't put all of them in one building. They might have several buildings or whatever they want to do. But if you can't drown it, you just want to burn out.
They don't go in buildings, so each battery, the, the vest is separate, so they're not in a structure, actual. The energy storage unit is the battery.
It's like a storage, it's like, it's like the size of a storage.
It's a cargo, yeah, like a cargo unit.
Didn't they originally say they would have fire suppression systems?
I think they went away from that, depending on, uh.
They what?
They went away from that because of.
Oh, I think they did. I thought the original discussion, they were going to put them in.
I, I think it was based on what they were going to be using for the battery. If it was going to be lithium, or what kind of chemical they're going to use for the energy power. So they kind of went away from it. I believe if you look in, uh, the NFPA eight fifty-five, that's a standard for installation of the stationary energy storage systems. There's a whole thing in the NFPA for that, and it also coordinates with the National Electric Code.
So the NFPA does not require it?
No, that is the standard for the installation of the vest units.
No, but I'm saying, does that require the suppression system?
I think they got rid of that language.
Did they? Yeah. All right. I knew they talked about it early on, but that's what they were going to do.
And as you see, the site plan or whatever, um, they would be encouraged to, to separate those structures and, and have them spaced out so that one fire wouldn't cause another fire. Um, I also inquired about issues involving, um, equipment or whatever, and nobody indicated there would be a requirement to go buy additional equipment. They all have, um, foam, they all have, um, reading devices, and, and they're going to really test the environment for, for gas or, or some, some reading issue where there would be a hazard to them, so they all have reading packs. Okay, then we go to forty-two seventeen, which incorporates all federal, state, and local requirements. And we've talked about FAA, environmental issues, game of parks, archaeological, histor- historical resources. You know, we're not going to let them put it on top of the Oregon Trail, and that sort of thing. Department of Defense, if we had a military facility within the county, and I think the only military facilities we have are National Guard facilities in Gary and Scottsburg.
So. Yeah, come on up.
Hod Cosman, one nine zero four nine eight, County Road G. It's national, it's Nebraska Game and Parks Commission.
Oh, okay.
Not department. Uh, I have talked with Jim Swenson, who's the assistant, assistant director. They'll be more than willing to work with you in any capacity that they can to make sure that they, um, that, that you have all the information you need to move forward in any capacity whatsoever.
Do you want to leave that information with Phil? Is that a number or anything that's called?
I'll get it to him.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you for your work. Uh, then forty-two eighteen is a statutory recitation of, of timelines or whatever for the county commissioners to make a decision on the application, and what sort of findings you must include in your decision. So if you, um, if you turn it down, you have to, the findings become more important if you reject the application as opposed to whether you allow it, and you can put conditions on your approval. Then there's additional remedies for enforcement. And that's it, and I speak according to eighteen.
Come on up.
State and spell your name, please.
Wayne Kilmer, W A Y N E K I L M E R.
Thank you.
Uh, Chairman of the Minutair Planning Commission. And we know these energy projects can have a big economic impact, both good and bad. Enough reliable energy, you attract manufacturing. But some people won't live underneath a high voltage transmission line, and that can bring down property values. And I feel that the individual communities should have the right to reject projects. I, uh, was going to talk about the, uh, magnetism that migratory birds use, but I think that was pretty well covered in forty-two ten, so I'll remove that. What I would like to add that if any commercial, class two or class three energy project is proposed to be within five miles of any community, that community shall have the right to re- reject that project. Now, I did say five miles, but from the other statements, perhaps three or maybe even two would be adequate. Any questions of what I'm getting at?
So I would make a legal comment about, about your suggestion. State, state statutes dictate where the community jurisdiction is for zoning, and where the county jurisdiction is for zoning. And it would set a precedent that I think that the county would not like, and these other towns would not like if we are expanding or contracting that jurisdiction between the municipalities and the county. That's, that I see as problematic.
Well, you're, you're correct, but the county can grant up to five miles. And I'm only asking for this in regards to the energy projects, nothing else. Uh, no building, other building, just the energy, because who knows? What, uh, what kind of batteries were you using? Lithium-ion phosphate?
We don't know.
Don't know.
We don't know, right?
It could change by then.
Yeah, hopefully that'll get better.
Yeah.
So, any of you think that might be appropriate?
So I think I understand what you're requesting. Um, the, uh, does any commissioners particularly have any thought about, um, doing that?
This is the first time it's been brought up and.
And this is just, just energy, nothing else.
Right.
You know, would still be the standard one mile for everything else.
Right.
But I think, uh, from visual effect to economic, to some people being scared of power lines that can, you know, they worry about magnetic effects. Couldn't bring that, make it difficult to sell home.
My, I think my thought process would be this, and that's that if, for an example, there was a, um, project that was, um, intended to go three miles from Minutair, um, and if the city of Minutair, um, the city council and was opposed to that, and, um, brought a, um, resolution to this board that we would consider it, in my opinion, that way, but possibly not to be written into these regulations. We would consider it as any other public comment.
Well, I, I'd like some kind of legal standing for the smaller communities.
Sure. Well, I understand what you're saying, and I'm not sure I'm willing to go that far, is what I'm saying. But I, I'm willing to listen to what these guys say.
As a county, I think we're your buffer zone between the contractor and, you know, and the city.
Yeah.
And we, and we're trying to put this together to where.
But you're, you're dealing with the whole county, and you're looking at the economic picture of the whole county. My concern is with the individual community, specifically mine, Minutair. But we should have some say. If, if it's close enough to be seen from, from town, we should have something to say about it. But I think, you know, like I said, two, three miles, if it's further away than that, then none of our business.
Should the county have a say in what happens in Minutair?
To a certain extent, you do.
Do we?
Yes. I mean, there's things we can't do that are in violation of county regulations.
But also.
Like, we couldn't build a five-story building in Minutair.
Your own city regulations are going to cover that, aren't they, mostly?
Right, but this is a project that's outside of the city.
But, well, I think the, the point that Phil has been, correct me if I'm wrong, Phil, is that you've got jurisdictions. You've got jurisdictions within the city, jurisdictions within the county. And, and I don't know that, that.
We have a, a one mile.
You have an ex- an extraterritorial round, around Minutair.
Yeah, and it's all the small communities.
Yeah, right.
Scottsburg, Gary's what, two?
Two miles, yeah.
I think we should have the same. I mean, I'd like to have the five, three make me happier, but I'll settle for two.
Yeah.
Um, we'd be happy to listen to that, I think, if, if you can get it changed at the, down at the state level. But I, I guess I'm not.
According to state regulations, I believe you, you can grant us up to five.
Yeah, but I'm.
So I went for the whole hog there, but, you know.
I'm not willing to do that personally, um, but if I'm listening here.
I'm, I, I, I don't know if I would rule it out tonight. I think maybe some more consideration. I mean, I, it's, I think it's, uh, a good ask. I think it's a legitimate ask. You know, it's one of the few comments that have come tonight that would relate to any future projects and not projects that might be pending or have been applied for in the past, so I, I, I appreciate your bringing that to us. Because we do need to, we do need to be thinking about future projects, not just the ones that may be pending.
Right, but they're trying to finalize this document.
We need to get to.
By our next meeting. And so we need to make a decision tonight whether or not you think they should change that, in my opinion. Isn't that what we're trying to do?
I understand that you've charged us with making changes, and we plan to have them for your next meeting.
Right, that's what I thought. So, um, so I guess, as Charlie put it earlier, as a straw poll, would we be in favor of Mr. Kilmer's recommendation? Or would we not, and?
I would only be in favor of that if they take the roads and the bridges out, those five miles. If they want to, if they want to zone, then they take the roads and bridges, wouldn't they?
So your answer's no.
And that's the way Scottsburg and Gary should be, if they want to take care of the zone.
If we can get funding, be glad to.
Yeah, so, so I guess your answer is no.
My answer's no.
Okay. Mike?
No.
No? Mine's no. Charlie is, yes, or a maybe, maybe?
A maybe.
Yeah.
He wants to talk about it, Mark. All right, gentlemen.
All right, we appreciate your comments, and I still would hope that you would, um, if we had that situation, that you would come to us with a resolution from the city saying, "Here's our concerns, and we're opposed," or whatever the case is at the time. And we should consider your input based upon a collaborative gathering of people and, and how they feel. But for this purpose, it won't be in this language, the way I say it, okay?
All right, thank you, Jeff.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, anything else, Jeff? Come on up.
Thank you.
Board, Mr. Chairman? I'm, uh, Jeff Metz, J E F F M E T Z.
Thank you.
I live in rural Laurel County. I'm chairman of the Board of Commissioners in Laurel County. And I heard the, uh, hearing was taking place tonight, and thought I'd come and see how you guys fare. I want to thank you, first of all, for saving Laurel County a lot of money, because we're not doing this. This, this ain't going to happen in Laurel County. We have, we have been zoned for, uh, twenty-four years. I've been on the county board for fourteen. We, we do not have language in our regs regarding solar or wind. We, we do not have language in our regs regarding solar or wind. And I got a copy of this, and I agree with some of it. Some of it I do not. I don't understand why a county's needs to get involved in the finances or the insurance or, you know, I understand the decommissioning part. But some of this is not the county's business. Less government is better. And, and you're making a law here. The, these are laws, these are county laws that nobody is gonna want to participate in. They may come to Morale County and I'll, I'll throw out the red carpet. Because alls we have in Morale County is ag. That's it. We don't, we don't get opportunities like you guys get. We want value, we want incentives to come to Morale County. And I have met with, with these folks. I, I think it's a pipe dream that anything ever happens there. But they've met with landowners in Morale County. They won't have the trouble in Morale County that they're having here. They're, they're, maybe it's a different, you know, we got way more cows than we got people. And that's a good thing for me. But I understand you guys' dilemma, you're, you're in a tough spot. I don't think it was made any easier with, with the way things were handled. But I'm, I'm fortunate that we only have three on our county board, and we all get along very well. And we're, we're trying to promote, you know, growth. Where, you know, I, I guess I can't, I can't wait to see what your wind energy rigs look like, because seventeen, I don't think, we have seventeen pages in our entire zoning rig. And this amendment is seventeen pages. But one other thing I'd like to say is, is, is you gotta value a personal property right. You know, what a guy does with his own property. You know, I don't want county, state, fed, I don't want any government coming in and telling me what I can and can't do, what I can plant, what I can put up. You know, and I don't believe county government should be involved in telling people what they can and can't do with their own property. It's kinda ironic that, that conservation easements, we all know what conservation easements are, especially the, the perpetuity ones. You know, you have a wetlands reserve program forever. That easement is in, and your, your zoning guy probably has dealt with these many times. That is a property right that the landowner enters into USDA with. He gets a large check, but that limits the right of that property owner to do things on that property. But he, he, you guys approve those. I know you have them. Mr. Cosman has many. But, so you're okay with those as a property right, but you're not okay with something else? So I'm, I'm a little, I'm a little frustrated, but, but I appreciate you letting me be here, and thanks for the information.
Free information.
Yeah, the free information for now. Anyway, any questions?
Phil will send you a bill, probably.
Well, we've already, yeah. He, he may be, he may be on our retainer, but, but it, it better be, it better be a discount because, you know, the work's all done here.
I was talking about copyright laws.
Yeah, he said he was gonna charge me a copyright. Anyway, thank you.
All right, thanks. All right, we're still trying to wind it up. Any other comments? We, we are in a public hearing, but we're trying to wind it down. All right, we do appreciate all of you that have been here and had comments on the subject. We are going to officially close the public hearing. And Phil, do we need to take any action? You're gonna, you guys are gonna come back to us with a change in the language that we've talked about.
Could we have them table it, tell them the twenty-first of the...
Sure, and we need to have another public hearing then.
It would officially be a public hearing if we table it, is what you're saying? Or either way, we need to, you're saying?
I think you need to have a public hearing again, because there's gonna be changes, and the public needs to have an opportunity to comment on those.
Okay.
And then anticipate that we're gonna have a document that we'll, we'll have a draft. And we'll get it put together the way you want to with your comments and...
Kelly's suggesting we table it, or is that, are you okay with that, or would you...
Is it not necessary?
Could we do it, accept it as a first reading with, with the new amendments?
I don't think, I don't think you need to link, table it. And, and, and table it. So, so let's move to table it and direct that we make the changes discussed and present a final product for the next meeting.
I'll move to table the consideration of the updated planning or zoning regulations for solar energy.
Okay, and bring back the final at the next meeting. All right, so do we have a second?
One second, Jeff.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to be tabled and brought back to the next meeting. Let's go ahead and vote.
You have five yeses?
All right, the motion's carried, be tabled till the next meeting. All right, let's move on on the back page of the agenda to receive update regarding the MPBD transmission line.
Looks like your friends got tired and went home.
They did. I, I just had one question. Am I allotted the same amount of time as, do I owe you right now?
Do you really wanna be here now, like, with the longer?
I gotta meet with the Buffalo County guys in the morning. I don't have all night.
Be sure you, I think she knows, but be sure you give your, your name and...
Yeah, Paul Bruny, I'm the project manager for the Scotts Bluff Power Project. I've been here, what, twice in the last year and a half, kinda updating you. We're gonna start building, so I thought I'd come again, update you and bring some of the staff along, but I think only one remains here, so we'll, we'll make do with that. Again, quickly, the need for the project. We needed another line for more reliability into the Scotts Bluff area. Only have one line connecting two main substations. So we added another one, gonna relieve some congestion on the system. But that hasn't changed since we talked. Page number three there, a little bit of history on all the steps we went through. Power review board and board approval, final line route, all those. So it kinda gives you a little history of the steps we went through there. Page four, the construction team here, the two individuals that left. They went to the city council meeting, because we had a, had a date there also. But Jim Schaefer, who left, he's the project coordinator, been with the district a long time. So he'll be the main point of contact out here for the public and all the construction activities. The MPBD inspector there, Thad Ackerman, been in the business a long time. He'll be on site every day, so you'll see him out there a lot. And then we have our contractor, Watts Electric out of Waverly, Nebraska. And Rick Gayden is here, he'll be the lead for the Watts group there that's gonna build the facility. So those are to be the people that will be working in your county. If you go to the next page, it gives you a little picture there of typically what, what a span is, some of the clearances, how wires react when they're strung at high tensions. The next page gives you a little picture of what they're gonna look like. Single pole construction right up next to the property line, so we don't impact farmers a great deal and property owners. If you go over to the bottom page there, the construction process, that just kinda outlines the six major steps we go through when we start constructing a power line. If you flip the page, you know, the land preparation, we go out and clear trees, establish temporary accesses off county roads, which we will work with your highway superintendent on. Put in temporary fences, culverts, things like that. And that will all be coordinated through your highway superintendent. The next step there is kinda make ready. We have a lot of lower voltage lines, we move out of the way. Roosevelt's moving a lot for us. Local MPBD crews are moving stuff out of the way for the new transmission line. So that's one of the activities that's going on right now.
Can I ask you a question?
You sure can.
What kind of truck traffic are you going to have during construction?
You know, it's not gonna be great. It's gonna be the typical stuff you see MPBD work with around here. Some of the larger stuff that comes through once in a while. There's five or six phases, there'll be, Rick, fifteen guys on site every day, twenty guys, somewhere in there. So it can't be a lot of trees, a lot of trucks. Okay?
Just, just check it.
I talked with the highway superintendent, if he's got any concerns, he has our numbers. And we told him we'd show up. Rick's company signed the contract, there's wording in there, they're responsible for any road damage. So if you bring something up, we'll make sure we get it to him. If you wanna go to the next page, talks about install foundations. Watts is gonna start, I believe, next week installing concrete pier foundations on the turn angle structures. Typically bore deep hole, fill it with a concrete and anchor bolt cage. So that, that work will start. This week, they're gonna start delivering poles out of York to the Scotts Bluff area here. So they'll start distributing poles along the route. Shortly thereafter, they'll frame the poles that are laid off and start setting them right after that. So we get them up in the air. So that's kinda the next step. The second to last step is to string the wire and the OPGW between the structures. And that's the final end of the project. And then we have restoration and clean up where we do a little grading, seeding, pull out our temporary accesses off county roads and things along that line. If you go to the next page, talks about Scotts Bluff Power Project here, kinda the timeline. Towards the end of phase four there, we're looking to finish spring of two thousand and twenty-five.
Can I, can I go back just, just one? This picture shows a truck and, you know, putting up your pole. It appears you're in somebody's field doing that.
Yes.
Is there compensation to that individual? Or is it just part of the, part of the expenses, part of the...
We paid for a thirty-foot easement on that piece of property for us to construct and maintain.
So you can drive your trucks on it?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes.
Just to take care of private property or...
Yes. And we have, I think eighty-two percent of the easements voluntarily signed, and we're working on the last few.
Good, good.
So things have been going very good up here. So, again, safety is utmost importance. We'll be working on traffic control. The second bullet there, you can scratch out Carney and put Scotts Bluff. I have an exact duplicate project in Carney, so my cut and paste kinda got away from me there. But again, safety is number one. We're involved with Rick and his guys every day on their safety brief in the morning to start the day off, make sure traffic control is there and all those type items. So, quick update for you, I didn't wanna keep you much longer. Last page there, there's some phone numbers there, website, if you need to get ahold of us and you can't find someone, you can let us know. Questions? Concerns?
I had one, I just wondered on you, but you pretty much answered it with your thirty-foot easement. I knew you, the last time I hear you, you told us, you told us you were gonna buy the easements. And I didn't know if you were setting the poles on the property, not on the property line, but on the, what, what the county considers an easement, I guess.
Yeah, we, we purchased an easement for thirty foot of width, and we set the poles up next to the property line on private property.
Behind our easement, the county.
Yes, yeah.
That's right. Where the fence lines are, you're inside of all of them.
Yes, we, we try to stay off public right away as much as we can. We don't wanna disturb your operations and all that, so we go on private property.
And you said that you didn't have much of an issue with obtaining the property and the easements?
Yeah, we're at eighty-two percent now, and the remaining half of that is just a few technical things in the document. So we're, we're moving along pretty well.
Good.
Okay?
So when will you start now, you're gonna...
Rick and his guys are gonna start build their, delivering material this week and putting in foundations next week. So that'll be the start, and then we'll, they'll go to framing and, and setting structures, stringing wire. And again, come March, April, May, somewhere in that timeframe, we plan to be done.
Okay.
All righty?
We appreciate it.
Thanks for your time, have a good evening.
Thank you, Scott.
All right, on the agenda, we'll go to the next item, discuss and consider appointment of the law firm of Douglas Kelly Ozzy. Schneider, Olson, Vogel has counsel for Scotts Bluff County Civil Matters. Phil, were you going to address that and, obviously, we've been talking about it a long time?
I'm highly in favor of the...
Yeah. Tell me, tell us again about any agreement or anything?
We have represented government entities for the last forty-five years. We don't have any written agreement with the college, with the city of Bayard, in Am, with Mitchell, don't have one with the airport that we represent. And it's a month-to-month sort of agreement. If you, and we've been doing work for the county for ten years on individual projects. Now you want to make sure you have someone here to assist you with the meeting, so it's expanding that role. We look at, look at the arrangement as, two months from now, if you wanna terminate it, so be it. And, and ten years from now, if we wanna terminate it, so be it.
So do we have access to the whole firm by doing this, Phil? Or just you?
Yes, that's why I specifically asked that, because I've talked to Mark, and, and December thirty-first, I, the only work I'm gonna be doing is work as a bankruptcy trustee two, one or two days a month, because I'm old. And it's time. And so I, I plan to retire from virtually all of my practice, except for bankruptcy trustee work at the end of the year. But we have two attorneys who have a lot of government experience. We all work on the college, we all help with other political subjects we need. And so we'll make sure that we get an attorney that you can visit with and feel comfortable with. And if you do, we'd like to continue the representation. If you're not happy with that, it's up to you to say if you wanna go a different direction. We're billing by the hour for the services we provided. So this last month was a lot of services provided, next month will be less. And that's the way it's been. Sometimes we have very little service provided, and other months it'll be a little more.
So we're not paying a retaining fee for all they're doing by the hour, by the work that's being done, by whoever it is in your firm?
That's correct. I'll be doing that work for the next, till the end of the year. And then we'll have someone else be assisting with that. And, and both the attorneys, Jason Olson has lots of government experience. He does work for the college monthly. He's represented, we went back in Hastings, he represented some of the local municipal corporations back there, some of the towns back there, so. And they're, both the guys are smarter than I am, so you'll be very good.
Okay, so this agenda item said discuss and consider, but with what you're talking about, is there any particular motion that we need to have tonight or anything as far as what you would believe would be appropriate?
You could make a motion to retain our firm, to do, to be civil attorneys for the company.
By doing that, do we have to put out any RFPs or any, anybody else, Phil?
No, there's a specific statute...
Not, not that I'm not happy with what you're doing.
Yeah.
Just don't wanna get ourselves in trouble.
But it's a good question. So I, I sent you some information about this some time ago. But section twenty-three, thirty-one oh nine is in with the county, county boards. And competitive, it says competitive bidding shall not be required for quite a few things, but specifically when obtaining professional services. So competitive bidding is not required for legal services or engineering services and services.
What if we just stay like we are and just call you when we need you and don't do anything?
It is whatever makes you happy.
And that's basically what you're saying is happening and...
But I don't think we're walking on anybody's toes.
Right, and I think that's what he's saying, that again, where I think we are asking him to be here at the meetings and to then help us with whatever help we need.
Correct. And, and if you, you get down to, have a look through the agenda, and you look and you say, don't anticipate needing Phil for anything else, you can say, Phil, I don't think you need us for anything else, and I'll go home.
As soon as you walk out the door, we'll think of something.
Yeah, then we'll, then we'll need you for something, but...
I know a number of you have expressed, expressed a desire to have someone here on a regular basis. I know a number of you have expressed, expressed a desire to have someone here on a regular basis because you never know when something's gonna come up. Or you never know when, whenever the public is gonna raise an issue or there's an issue about executive session rules and those sorts of things, so we're available to help with those things.
I don't know too many meetings where we could have used, uh, some, some type of legal advice, a lot of times we just move on with it. I don't know that's incorrect either.
You know, I, we appreciate the opportunity to help the county and, and, uh, so.
Okay.
I like working with you.
We all, I think we all do.
I think, you know, I worked with Steve and Bill and, and, uh, Lisa and they will all tell you that I do something that's maybe quite unusual, but I return phone calls.
Well, with, with that being said, can we let the media know why we're doing this? I think, I was in the county attorney's office last week and he's down another attorney. So I think we have two attorneys in there right now?
And he contracts with two.
And he contracts with two and how many do we normally, and then, how many, how many positions are we budgeted to have in that county attorney's office?
How many attorneys are in his office if he's fully staffed?
When he's, when he's fully, yeah, when he's fully staffed.
That would've been my first year here, I'm gonna think, I think five.
Five, so we're down.
Budget four.
We don't even know.
I don't really, I don't.
So the county attorney's not here to represent us in the civil matters, is, is the point, because he is spread thin with, with his caseload and his, uh, being short-staffed.
And if that changes, you, you know.
We could, again.
You could say, oh, thanks and it's been nice and, and, and we don't need your services.
Right.
But we, we'll be available for as long as we can.
Okay, so I think that's a, something fair to us, we can use you as much or as little as we want. And then we can terminate the services if, if we want at any point in time and I can't think of anything any more fair than that and, um, again, I, I appreciate that, so do we have a motion?
I would move that we consider appointment of a law firm.
Okay.
I'll second.
So we have a motion and a second, um, is there any other discussion? If not, let's vote. I don't think yours is.
Wait, my battery died.
Oh.
There we go.
Maybe you're too close.
Five yeses.
All right, so the motion's carried and we appreciate it.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Appreciate what you've been doing.
We'll get you a polo shirt or something.
What?
Polo shirts, Scotts Bluff, you get them with that.
You pay the hourly rate, you get the tie.
You get a tie, maybe a cap or something or?
All right, let's go to the next item, receive inventories from tourism and building and zoning.
That's me.
Yeah, all right, so those are the ones that were sent to us, right?
Yes.
And, um, so is there any questions from commissioners on that?
No.
Have a motion to accept those?
I move that we accept the inventory for a tourism committee.
And building.
And building.
And building the zoning.
Okay, got a motion? Have a second? Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote.
Now, please hold until I check to see if there are.
Russ, you need to vote.
I do.
Okay, there you go.
You have five yeses?
Motion's carried.
Four, yeah.
Um, so we'll go to the next item, discuss and consider approval of an SDL for PRES doing business.
Oh, whoa, whoa, don't forget Brenda, she's been here all night.
Oh, yeah, I'm so sorry, I seen tourism, I seen tourism and I thought, we just did that. Sorry, discuss and consider changes to tourism bylaws.
Okay, well, we need new board members, so that's why I hung out as long as I did, cause this is important tonight, but, um, I'll, I just wanna mention that we would like to change the makeup of the committee. And, um, first, let me throw out there that the Nebraska Visitors Act says that whether you have three or five members will determine a lot of what else can happen. And for us, since we do have a seven-member board, either two or three of these individuals can serve from the, uh, from the lodging. And we have decided that we would like to increase that to three, uh, people to serve from the lodging and we would like those people to be either uh, managers of the properties or property owners. And then we would like to add one other person for the sports affiliate. And one from a Scotts Bluff County attraction and then, as you already know, um, one of the positions is permanently, permanently held for the superintendent from the Scotts Bluff National Monument. So really the only change is that we're adding one more person from lodging. And then we will not choose members from transportation or events. So that's really the only difference, we're just going a little bit stronger on sports and a little bit stronger on lodging. And I'm sure this was in your packet, yeah, okay, and so the green parts just are in comparison from the, um, original bylaw in comparison to how it would read now.
And you said you're eliminating the one from attractions?
No, um, we're eliminating one from either transportation or events.
Oh, I see, okay.
Yeah. So we're just increasing a lodging, so that takes that up to three. And, um, the Scotts Bluff National Monument, two sports affiliates and then an attraction makes up our seven.
So technically we eliminated the at-large position?
Yeah, we did, we, technically we eliminated, um, the at-large position. And then maybe one of the other ones depending because we didn't have the three lodging, but, but yeah.
The other ones could be either or.
Yeah.
Yeah. Anybody have any questions or?
Are you, I guess I'm always on these tourism things, I look to Charlie and, um, are, are you in agreement with this?
I am.
Okay.
We actually worked on this together.
Good, appreciate that. So basically it's going to be approving the change in the bylaws?
Yes.
That's what the motion's gonna need to be?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and you could say the Article Three membership bylaw if you want to make it a little more specific.
Okay. Is there a motion from the? Or?
I move that we, uh, approve the proposed changes to the tourism committee.
The Article Three membership changes?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
So we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Let's vote.
Thank you.
These were yours.
Those were mine.
These are your copies, please.
We signed it.
I sent out two and I got four back.
Did you get five yeses?
I don't know yet.
Oh, good. I know.
You have five yeses.
All right, motion's carried.
Did you hear that Brenda?
What?
We're good.
Motion's carried. Yeah.
All right.
All right, so that concludes your stuff Brenda?
Yes.
All right, thanks so much. All right, now we'll go on to the.
SDL.
Yeah, discuss and consider approval of the SDL, special designated license for PRES doing businesses Rositas. The board and/or the sheriff, come on up sheriff.
We've, uh, looked at their SDLs in the past and they've had a number of them, then we've had no issues, so we have no objection.
Thank you for staying and delivering that.
Yeah.
In, in all seriousness, Mark, if, if you don't want to do what you just did, if you could just send a note.
A written?
Uh, something, something in writing, we've looked at it and everything is okay, we could, you could go home and do what you.
I could go home.
Especially on the ones that we've done before.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If there's a questionable one that.
It's up to you, we appreciate you being here, but.
Well, I think it's kind of my job to be here when you have a room full because you just don't.
Yeah, we appreciate you being here.
Well, you are the, okay.
Yeah.
Good idea. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I'll move to approve the SDL for prez.
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Let's go ahead and vote. Yours didn't, there you go.
Hey, you have five yeses?
Okay, motion's carried.
So the next agenda item, they, um, had a six-thirty appointment that she had to get to.
Okay.
So.
Well, that's all right, I hate it.
She can inform me and reschedule, Jackie and I had kind of talked about it because they were so far down the list already, but I kind of gave her heads up, I thought it was gonna be a long night and we'll just reschedule.
All right, we'll wish, yeah, maybe you can have them next meeting. All right, then we'll skip that item and go to discuss and consider appointment of designee for December twenty-four NACO election. Kelly?
I'll let Charlie speak to it a little bit here too, just cause, uh, during the business meeting, we elect the new position, we're looking for Secretary of Treasury.
Yep.
So if typically it's the chairman of the board, but, um, and if they're not gonna be in attendance or be able to make it, we need to, uh, have an alternate to vote in their place on behalf of the county.
I'm not gonna say I'm gonna be there at this point, I, I might, but I'm not, I think we need to assume I won't be. And, um, choose someone else, do we have other commissioners that are gonna be there?
I'll be there, Mike, are you gonna be there?
In December, maybe.
Okay.
I'm gonna try to be there, yes.
We're, we're.
December eighteen, nineteen, twenty.
Yeah, so, and the business meeting is on Thursday this year.
Thursday.
Uh, in years past, it's been on Fridays.
Friday morning.
Um, where, where I'm the, um, second vice president on the NACO Board of Directors. I would, I would really like if someone else was, was the voter, another person to cast our, our vote because, well, it's anonymous, isn't it?
Well, yeah, and I mean, it's, in the past, it's been like a, if there were people running against each other, the county elected officials got together and talked about who we thought and just throwing it out there, not that you need to do it, but I have been designated as that person for the county also, before.
Oh, okay.
Right.
So I do believe there'll be a contested election this year, just based on my conversations with folks.
Okay.
Back east, so, um.
I hope they campaign good with yummy cookies and stuff.
Um, so.
So Mike, you can't say for sure that you'll be there?
No, I can't say for sure.
Okay, and Russ, you, you don't plan to be there?
I, I could go, I haven't been.
It's good stuff, man.
Want to say you could be there?
Pardon?
It's good stuff.
What's the date on that?
December eighteen, nineteen and twenty.
Won't work.
Oh.
Won't work.
My wife and I got married on the twentieth and she kind of liked me to be there for the fifteenth.
Well, okay, but we also just said that the business meeting is on Thur- the Thursday.
You could leave.
You could leave after our business meeting, if you don't mind night driving.
I better. He said that you've done it before, why do we just keep you as, as our, as our designee?
Well, that's, that's the option.
I'd be happy to do it.
Very, very.
And you'll definitely be there, so if you don't, yeah. You're definitely gonna be there. Are you going?
Should you go to NACO conference a lot?
I might be able to, you know.
I called her and made sure she set aside the dates already.
But if it's a maybe, then I just soon we, I don't want you to have to feel obligated if.
I would move that we appoint Kelly.
I'll second.
So we have a motion and a second to appoint Kelly as the, uh, person casting the ballot for the county?
Okay.
Any discussion? Let's vote. Motion's carried, so Kelly will be the voter. Um, if we have an opinion there, um, Charlie, as to who we think from a
Yep.
From our, then I guess maybe you and Kelly can talk. You know them better than we do.
How long before we know who's throwing their name in?
We, it could happen on the floor, it'll probably happen, it will probably happen on the floor.
Okay, well, but, I mean, when Judy ran against the other gentleman and I can't think of his name, but.
Yeah, they'll start campaigning, campaigning as soon as we get to the conference.
As soon as we get there, but we won't have like a pre-made ballot with their names on it, is my question.
Probably not, no.
Okay.
All right.
So, let's talk. To make sure we're on the same page.
Yeah.
Okay.
Hand signals are strong, yeah, yeah. Okay, so that concludes the general agenda items, we're going to old business, uh, clerk of the district court window remodel, anyone know how we're doing there?
I've heard nothing.
I was at the clerk of the district court last week and it's a beautiful window.
Is it completed?
And it's very secure, it looks complete to me.
The glass is there?
The glass is in.
Oh, yeah, glass has been there a long time.
Right, it's the roll, the.
The trim looked like it was a complete to me.
I've been over there.
Okay.
Unless the roll-down piece is not functioning yet, uh.
Yeah, that's what I think.
That's what we were, had been waiting on.
I thought that's what we've been waiting on.
So maybe it is, can somebody call over and check for Kelly and find out if it's complete?
Well, I'll just leave it on here.
Leave it on the agenda till next time.
Okay.
Okay, any new information on time clock plus?
Um, I reached out today and the integration is two to four weeks away from completion. And then we'll, we can start integrating.
Okay.
Good job.
All right, we'll move to the next portion, uh, public comments. Anyone, uh, so we'll receive comments, uh, on items discussed at this meeting or suggestions for items for future meetings, but we can't take action on them tonight. Anyone from the public that wants to say anything? Come on up, Mr. Norby.
The reason I came tonight, I've been in, uh, conversation with Russ. And evidently we no longer have a state government-type trapper for this county and Banner County and Sioux County and a couple of them. And evidently it sounds like after talking to Russ that the county's already coughed up some money evidently to pay for this when I talked to you.
No, we have, we have money appropriated.
Money's appropriated, okay.
For those, for the trapper.
Okay, okay.
We're not paying them for not doing it.
No, he's not doing it.
Right, right, no, no, I, I, I just, I, I got that a little bit.
I just told him that we pay so much a year too.
Right, right, so that's what we're up against.
We do.
And where I'm at, out there, I'm right across from Vanhandle Pig. Which where they've increased the size and capacity, they've also got more beds. Which in the past, when we had, oh, the state trapper, um, Anderson. And he was able to go out there and use the deads, use some sodium cyanide and get rid of a bunch of them. Right now we don't have that and I am surrounded. We've got three cricks that come in there and they come in because there's deads. And they are allowed, by their permitting, I was told, they can put them in a pit, they don't have to be removed as long as they cover them up. Well, you know coyotes can dig. And like last winter, I killed over twenty-four head just on my place. And there's another feller up Wyoming, he got close to thirty and we've got at least that many more.
We, are we talking about coyotes?
Coyotes.
Coyotes, okay, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't know.
No, not coyotes, so what I'm here asking after I talked to Russ, he said that there is, money's appropriated. Rather than deal with the people we're dealing with, if there's any way that we can form some kind of unity between the counties and especially Sioux County, they got a mess up there. And fund our own trapper and tie him into the weed and pest board maybe, or something like that. So we got a man here, because where it comes down to, fellas, is when I start taking financial losses and dead calves. Because where it comes down to, fellas, is when I start taking financial losses and dead calves, it's a little tough to pay my bills. And we got a problem here. So the big problem goes to the federal government, then Nebraska, uh, Nebraska Game and Parks, not our problem. Then you get into the U.S. Fish and Wildlife, and they said, well, we don't sell any licenses, so it's not our problem. But then when I got down them a little bit last week, I said, I think it is because you sell licenses for pheasants and turkeys. And I no longer have any pheasants. And up until they started packing up, a week ago, I used to have, I, we were back up to eighteen headed turkeys. Three days ago, I seen four, and I have not seen them since. So nobody wants to do anything about this. But what's going on out there in my part of the world, a lot of people don't understand this, irrigation districts don't understand this. We have a lot of cattle operations that are now running on irrigated pastures. There's a lot of cows out in my part of the world, clear into Goson County. But Goson County now has ours, trapper that we used to have because they have funding for him, so he went across the line. And now we got nobody.
Okay, let me bring you up speed. When I talked to Tom Halsted, uh, he's hiring a, uh, district supervisor who's supposed to be on board July first.
Yeah.
Oh, July first. Excuse, November first, I'm sorry.
Okay, yeah, July ain't gonna do me no damn good.
Well, July first isn't that, January or July, November first isn't that far away. July's a long ways away.
Yeah, yeah, I'm with you, okay.
November isn't that far away. Uh, in the meantime, what they'll do, he's gonna come out here and then they're gonna hire a trapper. They're gonna.
Okay.
So I give him Dan's name and number, and Tom said he'd be very, be very interested in this fellow meeting, meeting up today when he came out here.
Wonderful, because.
Well, I have that arrangement set up with.
Thank you, because I was not aware of this.
But it is gonna take care of your problem in the meantime.
Right, we had to talk since I was on the phone last week.
Do we have anybody around here other than Dan that can take care of your problem?
He's, him and the old government trapper we had, that's it. And Danny, back when we actually had a fur market, he kept things cleaned up.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, he is, those kinda guys are not socially acceptable, but they get the job for us. And that's what we need.
What would, what would happen where we're in a predicament? Have you guys ever, you've been on the board a long time, Ken, did you guys ever put a bounty out on anything that, when we got in a mess like this?
Never had to.
Could we take some of that money that we're not paying these guys and put a bounty out here on these things?
Ask Phil.
What's that?
I don't think you know the answer to that.
But I, I don't know how else to help his situation.
Well, there are.
Till we get a trapper back.
There are at least one organization that I know, uh, that are, and I wouldn't call them professional coyote hunters, but they, they are out and about and killing a lot of coyotes.
That's the guy.
They just like to do it for fun.
Well, that's why I said we put a bounty on it.
Free, but if, if you offered some money to them, whatever it is that we're not going to pay the government, that's a possibility.
That's what I'm thinking, if we could do part of it, because a lot of this goes to prairie dogs and a lot of other things, not, not only just coyotes, but if we could put a, a so much a head bounty on it, he's talking maybe thirty to fifty head and whatever we could come up with.
Well, their, their biggest issue is getting provision to go on private property and all the things that they need to do. I don't think they'd have an issue with you, but.
No, and there's some other landowners, I don't think there'll be an issue. Now, the other thing that we do have to look at this as well. Now, we've got some other predators out there that only certain trappers can kill. And that's mountain lions and wolves.
Well, we're not gonna get that business.
So on, on, once we get this new guy in place, then we'll be able to work with them.
Then you can do that as well.
Right, right, because.
But you might, you might wanna give him a call and stop over after the meeting, and I will, I will give you his name.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, any, anything would help.
He's pretty idle in the wintertime.
Well, that would be good, because you know, I mean, here's the deal. You lose a few calves out there at fifteen to eighteen hundred bucks, that's a little tough to pay. Financial loss when it, that, everything's going on.
He may be interested. I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, okay, well, Russ, thank you, and I'm glad that Tom got back ahold of you.
Yeah.
Cause I did get him your phone number, and I'm glad he did get back.
He sent me two emails, and uh, yeah, and so I forwarded to all these guys, they all have a copy of that email.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you.
Like I said, the only way I know is if, until this gets straightened out, if we could, you know, put a bounty out there for a couple of months.
So the next meeting we have isn't for two weeks, and so by then, we're gonna be a week away from November.
Right, and then he's gonna hire somebody, so.
Right, yeah.
We can take any action to him.
Right, right, and I'm, I'm looking at this because if we get the snow back, what these meteorologists are saying, they're gonna come out everywhere. And we got a lot of guys out there now that fall cabin, that never did it before.
Alright, um, well, I, I mean, other. Are we asking to put this on the agenda for the next meeting, or are we not?
I think we should, I, I, yes, I would like to see it on the agenda, discuss it.
Okay.
Cause if there, we haven't used any of that money there, I'm, maybe just a small amount, but the way I talked to Tom, he said we, he hasn't used any because the guy quit July first.
Lisa, it's animal control, right?
Yeah, I think so. That's where you pay Panhandle for main site.
No.
It's all, yes, we pay AFIS and we pay, yes, we do.
Well, I don't know that you do for that.
Well, I don't.
I, I can tell you, those two places are the people that are paid out of that.
Tom Halsted assured me they haven't billed us for anything.
But I don't understand how you want, what I'm putting on the agenda is my question. Discuss and consider what?
Uh, the, 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 the state trapper, federal trapper that we've had.
Federal?
Discuss the coyote problem in, in southeastern, southwestern Scottsbluff County with coyotes around, would you say, or you're right, next to Panhandle Pig, right?
Yeah, yeah, I'm right across the road.
But if, what you're, what you're asking though is, is if, at the next meeting, if, if council finds out that we can pay a bounty, then we would need to discuss and consider. If we need to consider that.
Some sort of a bounty.
And figure out whether you can, figure out how much you pay.
Right.
Uh-huh.
And, and, and try to utilize.
Whether the criteria for, for sending people.
For that. Yeah.
With rifles through the county.
I see it being a few issues.
You might, you might be taking on a bigger risk than you think if you get all these guys out.
Well, maybe we're gonna say hire, uh, discuss, consider hiring a third party.
Well, if there was somebody.
To take the place of, to temporarily take the place of AFIS.
Hey, if we can fire them, find that person, Ken, this fella you're talking about, is he will have a full-time job, or is this what he does from?
He'll be busy for about another three weeks. He'll be busy for three weeks.
Who is the guy you're talking about?
Before he gets, before he's available?
I would think so, that's my opinion, that's my thought.
He does it all the time anyway, but in order to concentrate on what you're asking for.
You should call him in the meantime and see if you can invite him out.
Yeah, if I get a phone number for it.
Fix him a turkey dinner if you find any more of them turkeys.
No, we've been keeping them, trying to keep them out there.
Okay, well again, we can't take action tonight, but you can do some researching on, on the subject.
Okay, and who's gonna let me know?
What?
You know what?
What's going on? Okay, discuss and consider assistance for control of predators in rural Scottsbluff. Is that okay?
Yes.
Scottsbluff County.
That's what I said.
Well, Scottsbluff.
Not Scottsbluff. He doesn't, he doesn't live in Scottsbluff.
I spelled it Scottsbluff County.
Cool.
Then that's right.
Yeah, so in other words, Russ, they're getting somebody out here, and then they will address this and get us somebody.
Then they'll hire someone, but they're gonna, they have, they have a guy picked, who's just gotta go through the, he told me the guy's already, they already have a fellow hired that's worked with the feds for twenty-six years. He's coming right to work on November first.
Great, great, so, so we are progressing in this, but they're really gonna come in us.
Yeah, so you got it all kicked in gear and, and, uh, thank you, Roland.
Alright.
Alright, thanks. Any other comments from the public?
Who's the county guy? Pardon? Send me the confirmation on the county guy. Oh, I'll just shoot you this text. I'll shoot you this text. Tom, Tom Halsted. He's, he's, he's out of Manhattan, Kansas.
Yeah, we'll find it. Okay, so I think that's it for public comment, seeing none others. We'll go to board and staff reports. Um, where do we wanna start? Kelly, we'll go this way this time.
So, in-office voting started today in, in my office. Uh, last week, we started mailing out ballots that had been requested early. But today, we had seventy-eight people vote inside my, in, in a booth or a, a table in my office, and forty-one people came to the counter to request to take them home.
Okay.
How did that compare to last year, did you?
It, it was the first day, it's crazy. I, I have closed all three rings, I don't do that. And the girls are helping, I'm not pulling many ballots myself.
Okay. Is that it for you, Kelly?
That's it, for, for now, yeah.
Essentially, the email on the role of the polls, uh, little project, we've got set up with Civic Nebraska, I spoke with Sarah Sola, my, um, the NDOT Transit Division Manager, Public Transit Division Manager. We're all clear on this, um, we're gonna be able to coordinate it without affecting our normal services. Probably we just require one additional driver and vehicle. Uh, we're gonna advance schedule everything, and basically our plan is to, based on how many we have at each polling location, call them and say, we're gonna be to pick you up at seven, seven-thirty, we're gonna take you to the polling location. You'll vote, we'll take you home, then they'll move to the next polling, polling location to pick up any there, work their way from Lyman down through Mitchell, Morrel Mitchell. And, uh, potentially, I have to have a second one for a few trips in the, in the moral, or in the M- Miniterr, Malbey area. Um, most of the stuff in, in town, we're gonna be able to just take care of with our normal service. Biggest key is, is we, as long as we don't affect our regular service, we can do this. Um, they are going to give us a thousand dollars donation upfront, and they're gonna take care of all the flyers, that these will be distributed through the aging office and other human service agencies. And they have to have their trip scheduled about October thirtieth, that gives us a few days to get the logistics set up. That money can be used directly towards the county's local match. So what we have to pay each month, comes off the top of there. If we wind up with a high number of trips, and if we calculate what those fares would actually be, and it exceeds a thousand dollars, they do have additional funds that they are willing to give us. Um, I don't see that, that's a lot of trips. Uh, most of them are within the eight mile radius, so it's two dollars each way, four dollars round trip. So that's two hundred and fifty, I don't see it being that high. So that will be a little extra money in our coffers to help cover the county's portion of, for transit overall. Considered a sponsored trip, there's no issues with FTA or NDOT on that.
Awesome, yes.
And, and for the optics of it as well, uh, it's, I think it sheds good light on the county for doing what they can to make sure that people aren't, um, they can access polls and there's no, you know, hint of impropriety or suppressing votes or anything like that.
I get, I think that's, someone mentioned to me, uh, I love the fact of letting people vote, and the more people that vote, the better.
And in person.
No impropriety as far as one party or another party that would be influencing this.
No, anybody that calls and says, hey, we get this, and we can't afford, we're homebound, whatever, we will get the money, so.
As long as it's not skewed one way or the other from outside sources, then I'm okay with that.
And there, there were no stipulations to the money, they're just gonna give us the money, so it doesn't matter if they're a D or an R or an I, so. Okay, any questions, anytime, you can, let me know.
Does it say Civic Nebraska on the flyer?
It says, made possible by a partnership between Scottsbluff County and Civic Nebraska. And it's just a donation to them, is always all it will be, so if you're, if anyone asks. And again, there's, there's no ties to any party affiliations.
Okay.
We'll see how it goes, and I'll report back.
Okay.
Thanks, Ken.
Uh, Sheriff, did you have anything?
I have nothing.
Okay. Other staff?
Um, let me just remind you that I had an insurance committee meeting tomorrow scheduled, ten o'clock. I, Ken's on my committee, Mark's on my committee, and I invited you.
I'm, right, I plan to attend.
Okay, ten o'clock tomorrow, and Nerma.
Sorry.
But, and I just was gonna say, Nerma's also got a conference here on the twenty-third and twenty-fourth. Maybe the chair are aware, twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth.
Yeah, yes, so.
October?
Of October. It's always a good conference, so. I mean, you probably have received invites, you probably wanna get your rooms figured out if you're.
And is that in Carney, right?
It's in Carney as well.
Okay.
Anyway, yes, Charlie, were you gonna say something?
I'll save it for my comments, sir.
So I have to stick around.
Okay.
It is, it is regarding the insurance.
Oh, okay. Alright, I don't.
Anything else here? Um, and certainly, Phil, if you have comments at this point in time, feel free to chime in if needed. Um, is there anyone else back there? I can't see.
No, there is not.
Okay, alright, Russ, do you have anything?
Uh, I went and inspected the, the new bridge on, uh, South Broadway, uh, where they just did the, the new repairs. You know, there's some, de- definitely some deviation, and it's rough, but they took a straight edge out there, and those guys followed that line right up. You know, our old bridge came up like this, and all they did is brought it to the peak. I mean, they're, they flattened it out. But they didn't make it any higher than it already was. There's one or two spots, a real minor, that they could do a light touch-up. But it was just like, we poured the bridge just like that, just like a, a curtain, I mean, it's, uh, the deck is not flat, it's flat side to side, but not lengthwise. That deck is, the deck, it just poured like that. And I mean, we took a steel straight edge ten foot long and checked all their work, and ninety percent of it is matched that bridge a hundred percent. They've actually done a nice job on that bridge. And then we went out and checked County Road M Bridge, and there, they removed all the piling in the middle of the canal. I never got to talk to Steve about it tonight, but they were, what they wanted to do was drive a piling and then wrap a concrete column and drive it down into the water, or not drive it, but pour it down into the water about six feet. So they would have to go in, and they were gonna reroute the channel, divert the water, and, and dig out a, a big, uh, coffer dam and do all this. And I said, why can't we just come in here, set a steel column around, around pipe over the H beam, drive it in, core fill it? And the guy said, we've done that a lot of times, but he said, that's not what your engineer spec'd, and I said, well, told Steve, I said, why don't we see if we can't do that? It looks about, like about a hundred thousand dollar savings to me. And I think they might, he, so Steve's checking on that to see if that can be an option on County Road M.
Okay. Anything else?
That's all.
Mike?
Well, I've been to an extension board meeting, uh, I did, uh, represent the county on the county government day, welcomed the young people and gave a little spiel about the important privilege of serving their community. I attended the Pink Guard hearing, I attended a Naco meeting in Bridgeport, I attended the, uh, traffic incident management ceremony out at Nebraska Department Roads. Uh, and our emergency management team is out there to accept our plaque. Uh, I did traffic control for the marathon, I went to the elected officials meeting. I have a recent twenty-two board meeting the tenth down in Banner County, and that's about it so far.
Um, I'll go the, um, several of us attended the Bridgeport, um, uh, Naco meeting, and I appreciate everybody's attendance there. We also got to, um, part of the discussion there was about a jail, that jail in Sydney that you talked about, Ken, at one time. And they were giving a little bit of a presentation, and, um, as, um, you said, we reminded them of what we're doing in Scottsbluff County. I think I was there, Charlie was there, Mike was there in that meeting, and the sheriff was there, and I commented a little bit, but the sheriff kinda got up and told about our jail and, and, um, what we have available. And I thought you did a great job explaining all of that. I think, uh, I don't know if you've had any response, but certainly I had a couple of them, of commissioners that said, um, that they need to be in touch with your office a little more. And what's going on at the jail, so I would only mention that. Um, couple things, I think you all got an invitation for the Veterans Day Parade in your box. If you didn't, um, we can get a copy of that. Um, Kelly, I wanna remind you that we have jail, we need to do a jail visit next meeting.
Well, I'm already gonna be here a long time.
Needs to be on the list.
Thank you for helping me remember that.
Yeah, um. There was a couple, um, things, we had letters in our packets about a major disaster declaration, and I didn't know whether Rob Crowder was gonna be part of that. That was something about the federal government, um, included Scottsbluff County in a major disaster declaration, and it only a. And it only affected public entities that could apply for whatever, but just make sure you're aware of that, it was in, a copy was in our packet, I believe. So be aware of that, I was hoping Rob Crowder was aware of that, I'm sure he is, and that hopefully if there's something that needs to be done, we could be dealing with it.
We sent in a couple dispatchers.
Are you sure, wasn't it in an email?
It was an email.
I was like, I did not put, we put your packet together, we didn't put it in.
Yeah, it was, it was an email.
We sent, we sent dispatchers to North Carolina.
Yep, I had that on the list too, we're sending, uh, some dispatchers to North Carolina to help with the, um, hurricane things.
They took some donations at the picnic table too.
Yeah.
I don't know if you saw that.
Yeah. The, Russ has already talked about the USDA and the wildlife thing. Um, there's also a broadband meeting coming up, October sixteenth, that the state's putting on, I think it's gonna be local. That was something in our packets, or email as well. So, be aware of those things, um, that's all I have, go ahead, Kenny.
Kaplan meeting, all we did is some strategic planning, which doesn't really affect anything. That, that I would report, all my meetings are this week.
Okay, Charlie?
Um, so my comment on the insurance committee meeting, um, I would really like the, uh, insurance committee to put some heat on RCI to get us telehealth available in our plan. From what I've been, what's, what's that?
I mean, it's all about money.
Right, so, so here's the thing, is it should not be about money. Cause telehealth, telehealth lowers the cost of a doctor's visit. So for them to say, to, for them to want to upcharge for the ability to provide telehealth is backwards. So we need to put the heat on it for that.
Maybe that's not we need, just take that expense thinking or lessening further, for that.
Well, that too, I mean-
But we are also meeting with Aflac, who might bring back the telehealth
Okay.
Option, that's what we're gonna be learning about tomorrow.
Okay. Um, but the other thing with, with, you know, but if I, if my telehealth isn't through RCI, it's not gonna count towards my deductible.
Sure.
So, it's just, you know, we, we really need to put some pressure on RCI to, to do what's right there, so.
If we could get ahold of them.
Are they not answering phone calls?
Their website, every, I mean-
There's been some issues, so yeah, I mean, it's a good suggestion, Charlie.
I mean, they've, they've really kinda been on the forefront of technology, it's kinda-
They had something significant happen and they haven't given much information to us, so just-
It shouldn't even, yeah, it shouldn't be close, it shouldn't be. So, um, TCD meeting is this week. However, I will be in, um, Ogalala at the, at the ACO Legislative Conference. Um, there's a, you know, a couple dozen different pieces of legislation, uh, that ACO is going to look for sponsors for. We'll, we'll take positions on, on the legislation that's coming from counties. Um, I do have a piece of legislation in that conference. Um, I think I've talked to you guys about it in the past, but, um, currently, uh, tourism funds can be, we levy to two different funds. The capital improvement fund and also the promotion fund. You can move, currently you can move promotion, sorry, you can move capital improvement money over to the promotion fund, but you cannot move money from promotion to capital improvement. So, my, my suggestion is to put them into one box, or into one bucket. Um, or make the money, you know, able to be transferred back and forth, um, both directions, so. Um, and then we have a tourism meeting this week, uh, Wednesday. And, uh, should be a relatively short meeting. Um, so that's it.
And our, our next-
Oh, I do have, sorry, I, I did have one other thing. There is, um, there are some additional software available to us from MIPS that I learned we're not using currently. Um, there's a new budget program.
I have asked for that for six or nine months.
Okay, I just, I just had a conversation with Derek and he said that-
I have talked to Derek personally, so get on him and see why we don't have it available.
Okay. Um, so what I did do is I asked for, um, so there's a budget program, there's a benefits piece, um, it's like a self-service. We did this at Regional West right before we left, I think, where, where you could go on in your HR portal and you could sign up for insurance.
They have that, I didn't, was not aware of that.
It's brand new, brand new.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Um, so it might make open enrollment easy. Uh, might be too late though for open enro- enrollment this year. Um, um, so those are some i- some items, what I did was I asked Derek sometime after election to present to us these new softwares available from MIPS, um, at a commissioner's meeting and we could see how they could benefit us.
They were presenting the budget software a couple of years ago, but then I guess I, I don't know what the concept is.
So I'm saying, it's been available, I've asked for it, even on the green screen, I want it so that when we get our upgrade for the county clerks, that I can show you how to use it.
Kurt? I did forget one thing at the officials meeting we brought up and we just learned about it, um, working with Ashley and, and now Rob and Jay and I, um, put in a neat, for a NEMA grant or a project to put an emergency generator to power the fueling facility and the bus barn. Uh, and emerg- and we got priority on that, uh, initial priority that moved us up. Um, Ashley and, uh, Rob are working a lot of the preliminary legwork, a lot of the data gathering. And then we could size it, things like that, um, probably be a lengthy project, but it is pretty straightforward, we don't need a lot of the environmental studies and all that, cause it's already been done because of the bus barn facility. Um, does require twenty percent match, I think, between my capital improvements fund and Jay's, potentially we should be able to cover that, should we get approved for that. And the next step Jay wants to talk, uh, and Ashley and Rob are gonna look into, seeing if we could get funds, some grant funds for the, uh, basically the rewiring of the roads and bridges building and setting up the transfer switch to move the existing generator from downstairs out there, since we won't need a generator, it'd be a much small, probably a smaller amount. See if we can also possibly get some grant money to help cover some of that cost as well. Um, probably, they said, could be a year, could be three years, it's the face of government, so, but it is, we are, that one has received, uh, favorable, uh, approval and has moved up the list.
What's the name of that grant?
It's through NEMA, Nebraska Emergency Management, it's mostly federal dollars that NEMA doles out. But it's because we can, one, we need the fueling facility for disasters, emergencies, and we are part of the, the transit's part of the LEOP. So if they need to use us for evacuation, we need to be able to get in and out of the bus barn, fuel the vehicles, and then potentially use the bus barn as a evacuation, uh, shelter, so they're prioritizing.
Could that, could that grant also help us get the comm center out of the basement?
That would have, that would have to be a separate one, and that's, that's what Ashley and Rob are gonna start working on.
Okay.
We already have the generator, but then just to cover the costs of moving it out and they're, they'll have to rewire to isolate circuits in that older building and put in a transfer switch, et cetera. And hopefully we can work on another grant to get that done as well.
Okay.
So.
Okay. Alright, so, I think that's it, I do wanna mention, uh, our next meeting is September twenty-first, right?
How about October?
I mean, October twenty-first.
Yes.
Man, we're betting on that tonight.
Well, I was cleared in July.
Yeah, October twenty-first. Alright, alright, hearing nothing else, meeting's adjourned.
Thanks, Phil.
Hey, everyone.
Good night.
Thanks, Phil.